Sure, will do. We'll start with Board Member Jeff Bennett. Board Member Deirdre Brown. Board Member Elizabeth Callahan.
Here.
Board President Nubia Duval-Wilson.
Here.
Board Member Regina Eckert. Board Member Bill Guilford. Board Member Bimol Kapadia.
Here.
Board Member Will Meyer.
Here.
Board Member Shana Saka Gabel.
Here.
Right.
Board Member Deirdre Brown.
Okay, great. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 2:30 p.m. on January 3rd, 2025. That said notice was sent via email to Maplewood and South Orange Township clerks and the editors of the news records Star Ledger, Tap into Soma, and The Village Green. And now, before we motion to go to exec session, we will have the Maplewood Middle School Select Corps perform for us tonight. Thank you. Okay, that was amazing. Thank you so much. Another round of applause. And no one wants to stay for the meeting. So I'd like to make a motion to enter into exec session at 6:38 p.m. to discuss attorney-client matters, personnel, and HIPAA reporting. The length of the executive session is estimated to be 75 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Brown. All in favor? Motion passes.
And just checking to see if there are any students for public speaks in the audience? No? Okay. So I'd like to, oh wait, let me wait for Mr. Moody. I just realized I need him for this next part.
Take your time.
Good to go, good to go.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from September 25, 2025 executive session and regular board meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Eckert. All in favor? Thank you. Great. Minutes have been approved. All right, we've got our student rep here. Hey, could you please give us your update?
Yes, ma'am. So I want to start with our school board recognitions. So we're going to start with the creative crew at Maplewood Middle School. Congratulations for winning the NJ School Board Association STEM Tank Challenge. Last week, last week, the students traveled to Atlantic City and won $2,500, beating over 550 teams with their winning project named The Cross Guard, led by teachers Ms. Zav- oh geez, sorry, Zavoki. And Mr. Wright, the winning team included Teddy, Nick, Clara, Sam G., Lila, Frank, Mila, Sam C., Zareen, Finn, Rourke, Maddie, Sylvia, Bryce, and Lena. We're so proud of these students for their creativity in building the mechanized gate designed to improve traffic safety around MMS. Next, we're going to move to MMS music ensembles because earlier tonight, we heard musical selections from the middle schools' music ensembles and would like to congratulate them for performing in the Celebration of Sound Music Festival earlier this year. The select chorus was led by Ms. Bradshaw, the Honors Win Symphony, led by Mr. B., and the 8th Grade Orchestra, led by Ms. C., each performed well before the festival judges and received the highest possible rating of "Superior." And our final recognition is going to be to the district as a whole for successfully completing our series of back-to-school nights last month. Each evening, the, each evening gave the families an inside look at classroom life and the engaging learning happening everywhere across the district. A shout out to the counselors who ran info sections, info sessions to help families learn about classes, programs, and how to support us along the way. Those nights really show how much our schools and families work together to help students succeed. And at the tail end of School Principals Month, we would like to thank all our principals for inspiring students every day. That brings our recognitions to a conclusion, and I have a couple issues I would like to talk about in my update. So since the last Board of Ed meeting, the Student Council has collected feedback from hundreds of students regarding various concerns, specifically the inefficiency and ineffectiveness of the current photo ID system at Columbia High School. Eighty percent of our responders expressed dissatisfaction with the current system, with over 100 sharing their experience of frequent damage and loss and an extremely difficult time replacing them. On top of this, a common theme throughout student feedback is the annoying, clunky nature of photo IDs and their ugly appearance. And the goal of this project isn't necessarily to immediately eradicate the use of photo IDs, but rather to explore alternatives or supplements that better fit students' wants and needs. At the last meeting, I mentioned using bracelets as an alternative means of student identification, and since then, student feedback has also highlighted other potential physical or possible digital options as well that we can obviously consider. That being said, if we do keep the current photo ID system for the time being, students should be given a certain level of creative input for those photo IDs, especially with Columbia High School being a very arts-focused school. Similar to our yearbook process, they should be able to submit drawings and designs to a school-wide contest with top entries being offered as customizable ID options. I've also heard from various students that they would like to select their yearbook picture because right now, we, a lot of the freshman IDs have old middle school pictures, some from like 6th grade. So a lot of freshmen are like, you know, let's upgrade those. Since Columbia orders the bulk of its student IDs in mid-December, this offers plenty of time for Student Council to hold this contest and manage selection and voting. And this lets students, lets students influence, sorry, these policies and would increase support and encourage respect for the rules. Secondly, I would like to briefly address another pressing student concern, which is the facility maintenance at Columbia. Over the past few months, there's been considerable discussion about the district's long-term plans for expanding and improving school infrastructure, both at Columbia and across the district as a whole. And while these plans are important for the future, I want to emphasize the importance of caring for our existing facilities in the meantime. Our students take notice when their facilities are well-maintained. They also take notice when they're not. Via Google Forms and direct conversations with various students, we have received complaints and requests to focus heavily on maintaining facilities now and not necessarily being distracted by the projects of the future. We recognize that the board has done much towards improving facilities on a larger long-term scale. An example of that is the Ritzer Project, and we're incredibly grateful for that. However, I want to stress the importance of the maintenance at the smaller levels as well. This includes bathrooms, water fountains, et cetera, the things students take notice of every day they're at school, every day of the week. I firmly believe that students mirror the care and attention they receive from their school, and by maintaining everyday facilities, the district can show its students that it values them, which in, which in turn would foster school pride and encourage a greater care of Columbia and its community. Currently, I'm actively working with Principal Sanchez and the CHS administration to address these issues, and various Google Forms will continue to be put up and they will remain pending throughout the school year to further collect data. Upgrading the ID system and improving school facilities are the first of many projects, and the Student Council will continue voicing and adapting to the needs of the student body as new feedback emerges. So, the end of my monologue. If anyone has any questions.
So, Pat, let me piggyback real quick. We will be submitting a grant for water infrastructure for our buildings that will include upgrading our water fountains, filters, and will probably also include our toilets in there as well. So I'll share that with you. It's due late November. I'll share, I'll share the draft with you guys.
It's perfect. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you so much for these updates. Are there any questions, additional questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next it's the superintendent update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off with some spectacular news. Not just great, but spectacular. Our Maplewood Middle School STEAM team are the state champions for the 24, 25, no, 25, 26 school year. They're going to be at our next meeting, but I just, we have it on the website, but any chance I'm getting now, I'm making sure everybody knows. I've been personally been participating in this program since its inception, since 2015, and this would be the first time we, I even got to qualifications, final qualifications, let alone won it. We were lucky enough to see the presentations of the final three teams, and STEAM Tank is, you have to go through about three different rounds, and you're presenting your ideas to a panel of about eight or nine adults in different fields. When I say their presentation was spectacular, it was just spectacular. And if you go over to Maplewood Middle School, you will see their product sitting there right on the corner and the fruit of all their hard work. It was, to say it was remarkable would be an understatement, and I'm sure some of our board members will, will talk about it. But I do want to mention, and I'll say, a team of dedicated MMS students called the Creative Crew showcased their solution addressing local environmental sustainability. This win is a testament to the talent of our students and the dedication of the educators who inspire them. Following the victory, the students and their mentors, Mary Alice and Glenn, were honored with an invitation to present their innovative work at the Annual New Jersey School Boards Association Conference in Atlantic City, which happened last week. I want to give real special recognition not only to our students, their families, but also our staff members, our supervisor, who I emailed and said, hey, maybe we should look into it, and found these two wonderful individuals, Mary and Glenn, and they ran with it, and just ran with it. And I would be remiss not to mention the fact that the Achieve Foundation funded their project 100%, paid for their busing as well to go down to Atlantic City. And I'd be remiss not to mention Victor Luca over in Maplewood Township and his team, who bent over backwards to help these kids with their project. So, a lot of people working from different areas of government, but it came together so very well. So, big thanks to that team and congratulations. We do want to talk briefly, as you all know, SNAP benefits, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, will be unfunded come November 1st. We have been working with both towns and various organizations throughout South Orange and Maplewood anticipating this stop of funding. So, right now, and I want to make sure we get this out, we're sending letters out this week. The following is happening. So food shopping by Wednesday, Cougar Cares will be doing that, putting together care packages. We're giving out Walmart gift cards to our SNAP kids and SNAP families. We're estimating that to be anywhere from $265 to around $300. We'll have the exact number by tomorrow, but we're in that realm. We've reached out to Stop &amp; Shop, and they'll be helping us out with additional gift cards. We have an account now with Rent Party. It is a It is a donation platform, and that will be in the letters tomorrow going out, so you can donate to help through Rent Party. We are having school-wide events as well, Penny Wars, where we're collecting those funds. We are reminding folks that if you're eligible for free and reduced lunch and are receiving SNAP, please reach out to us or reach out to your municipality. We are working very close with the Health Department. Big shout-out to Candace. We're having our interns make calls to families to make sure they're okay and see what they need. We are also determining who is eligible for free lunch and breakfast and making sure that's available to our students. And again, Rent Party will be the platform we are using for donations, and that will also be in the correspondence we're sending out. We are convening the Children's Cabinet also to meet, to make sure, to see what other organizations are doing, and then we're also meeting with the municipalities, I believe, on Monday as well, to again synthesize all of our energies and work. So, we'll have more information on that moving forward. We want to make sure that our families are taken care of. I do want to also point out, aside from the water infrastructure grant, we're also applying for the recent cellphone grant that the state has put out. We submitted that last week, which would really just increase the amount of yonder packets that we have. We should hear about that within, I believe, a month, the grant noted. We also want to make sure that, and I will carry here, we are participating or accepted in something called the NJ Safe Program. It is a new program being launched in New Jersey that will provide our parents and students with an app they could download and also a reporting tool for issues of mental illness, suicide, violence, things of that nature. Using this app, they can report it right off the bat, goes right to the district and the police. It also has a channel that goes right to trained counselors if it is a mental health issue, so we're excited to launch this app. We should have it up and running, I would say, by December 1st, so you expect to see more information on that. Look on our website right now, we have some information posted about it. We're also very excited about the TAP Auto Program, Technician Advancement Program from the New Jersey Coalition Automotive Retailers. They reached out to us, they state they are running a program now to train automotive technicians. If you do not know, the automotive dealerships now are down by about 65% of their workforce in regards to automotive technicians. So, the New Jersey Coalition of Automotive Retailers have put together a program where kids after school can go to dealerships around our area and train to be automotive technicians. We had an info session for Columbia High School students. We had five kids that were really excited about the program. They attended the in-person info session last week, and I believe we'll be starting that first cohort within the next two weeks, and then if they don't get into that first cohort, they will be in the second cohort starting in the spring. It is out of Hillside Toyota, right on Route 22. They go there after school for eight weeks, they receive training, and it qualifies them to be an auto technician and get into the auto field. It's a great way to prepare our kids for the auto field, especially for those school districts such as South Orange Maplewood School District that can't afford, can't afford the infrastructure improvements, so we would have to really put in five different bays to qualify for funding, so most districts can't do that unless you're a vocational school. So, this program is perfect for districts like us who have kids that are interested in auto, can go right to the dealership and get trained, so we're very excited about that. We just sent out a survey in regards to exploring the possibility of starting a dual-language program next year in the district. An elementary dual-language program provides instruction in two languages, such as English and Spanish or English and Mandarin, to help students become bilingual and belligerent. It typically integrates native English speakers with native speakers of the partner language in the same classroom, with academic subjects taught in both languages throughout the day. It would be a K to five program. We are, we've sent out a survey, I believe, today, asking folks their opinion on whether we should explore a Spanish program or a Mandarin program. The program would start in kindergarten if we decided to launch it and go through fifth grade. Finally, we did have a great meeting today with Judge Wallace. It was our quarterly-monthly meeting. I want to give a big shout-out to Black Parents Workshop and Judge Wallace and Mr. Rubin. We really had a productive meeting, and I, we walked, Dr. Gilbert and myself walked away with that, from that meeting feeling like we had true partners in regards to the equity work we are doing, so I do want to shout-out both of them. And we have started some of the Ritzer work, so on October 14th, we had Spiesel and Engineers go down to Ritzer Field and do a walkthrough of the field, and about, I believe it's two weeks, maybe more, they'll be taking their soil.
Yeah, and they're doing their boring holes and doing measurements and soil samples, and I'll cover some of that stuff as well in the Ritzer update.
And I do want to thank everybody, October 14th, who came out for the community conversations at the high school. We had a nice turnout and great conversation, so big thanks. Please look for more community conversations and town halls in the near future. You'll receive emails, and you'll see the posting schedule on the board website. You want first? All right. Ann Anzola will be doing a NJSLA update for the district.
Hello, everyone. It's the C31. Okay, so, last two months ago, I guess, we did our NJGPA, and we're back for a little more data fun. So, tonight, we'll be presenting NJSLA access and the DLM scores for the 24, 25 school year. Next slide, please. Thank you. Perfect. So, the graphic on the left, we have been using for quite a few years, and it talks about the whole SOMSD child, student, and what we look for to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of our students. So, we have culture and climate, NJTSS, Student Opportunities, Instruction and Programming. So, what I wanted to do in this slide is talk about some of the things that we implemented last year, just some of the highlights from last year that helped support some of the growth that we'll see in the data. So, in culture and climate, we really strengthened our SEL, HIV, culture, climate, equity, and restorative practices to foster belonging and inclusivity in our schools. We used our NJSky data to guide improvements and measure progress. For NJTSS, we used our Diamond that we've been kind of referring to, that Dr. Correa created, to support students in intervention and referral services and our Gifted Action Plan. We introduced automatic interventions for students in areas like attendance and for failing grades. Student Opportunities, we expanded the academic and emotional support across schools with Tier Two interventions, tutoring, and counseling. With Instruction, we supported year two of our K5 Eureka Math Squared Program with targeted professional development to enhance Tier One and Tier Two interventions. We launched our Magnetic Reading Phonics Program in grades K through three. We supported the implementation of iXL and iReady resources for students and teachers, and supported data-informed decision-making using our Linkit Data Warehouse. We also strengthened our middle-school math curriculum by selecting a new math program for our grade-level math in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that we picked the program last year for this year. And then in program, and we strengthened support programs to address diverse needs across the student subgroups. Next slide. So, are, we are going to move into our NJSLA ELA data. Next slide, please. So, as a whole, we have a few different charts here. You can see in the top-left that we have, back one, I'm sorry, Jonathan. Yep, right there. You can see that we have outscored the state average for, in all areas, all grade levels for ELA. Some noteworthy areas is the, for district-wide ELA proficiency, meeting expectations of level four, remains strong at nearly 48%, slightly up from 45%. Grades six and seven demonstrated highest growth in student meeting exceeding expectations of 5.2 increase and a 3.5. And then, we had, we have stable performance with modest growth yearly in grades six through seven, improving most rapidly. You can see on the right-hand side, by grade levels, our increases. We did have some nice, nice increase in grades three, four, six, seven, and all grades together. The slight decline that we did have, we did have a slight decline in grades five and eight, and a little bit more of a decline in ninth grade, which we will talk a little bit more about ninth grade in general coming up. Next slide, please. Okay, so these are breakdowns of demographics throughout the, all of our test scores. We've seen some nice growth in certain areas. We do see areas that we can improve on, continue to improve on. Again, looking at our ninth grade in general, we are, we have seen some areas of concern in ninth grade that we'll, again, we'll address as we come, come up to that point. But, for the most part, some slight drops. There's a 20% drop in demographics of other, but there are only 13 students, so we, you also have to look to make sure that there's a huge, bigger population. Next slide, please. These are our special populations, which I am excited to see some of the gains that we've had in some of our special populations, notably in the elementary schools, three through five. In our special ed department, we saw a 9% gain in our language arcs, which I think is awesome. And our middle-school special ed also went up, and our high school went slightly down. But we're starting to see some of the fruits of our, and as we continue through, the fruits of our work together with curriculum and instruction and special ed department coming together, and we're starting to notice some nice gains or good trajectory going up, so we definitely are excited about that. Next slide, please. Okay, now we will focus on our math. Next slide, please. So, overall, math proficiency increased by 7.5% from 24 to 25. Sixth grade had a 7.3 increase. CHS Geometry and Algebra II had large jumps in proficiency, 8.6% and 36.8%, and grades three through six had steady upward trend, particularly strong foundational growth in grades three through five. One thing I really would like to point out on these charts is specifically looking at grades three, four, five, and six, whether it's comparing to the state or just overall, the growth that we've had. We are now, this was after two years of Eureka Math Squared, so we continue, I believe we will start to see trends moving forward as our kids continue to learn through, through Eureka Math, these scores continuing to move up. So, we're really excited about the data and seeing that the work that we're putting in and the, and the decisions that we are making are paying off in that area, so it's very, very exciting. This is what we thought would happen, and it is. Okay, um, did I need to put something about ninth grade? No? Oh, and then, you know, we also, just looking at our math in the orange on the right, in the right chart, you know, there is some small drops. We were looking at, I'm sorry, the, the high school, we are now working on the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math. The high school Algebra I would be students who took grade level, grade level sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math, which we are now, have just changed the program, and it's a continuation from Eureka Math, so hopefully we'll start to see our, our high school scores go up also. Next slide, please. Okay, so our demographics. Oh, one back, I'm sorry, Jonathan.
No, one forward.
One, oh, I'm sorry, one forward. The other way, sorry.
One more.
One more. Excellent, thank you. Okay, so, we're seeing a lot of green on this chart, we're seeing a lot of great progress in our math in, in general, and the areas where we're seeing, we are seeing a little bit of decrease. It is minimal, now, of course, we don't want to see decrease, but I do have to say, I think that these numbers are manageable, and we can definitely, you know, zero in on those specific skills or standards that our students might be lacking and really kind of lift those areas up for our students. Next slide, please. Okay, so our special populations, I am really pleased to see the work and the progress that we're making in this area of, with our special populations. We do have a few that had dropped in some ways, but majority of our special populations have made some nice growth, you know, through, throughout the grade levels, so we are really happy and pleased to see that trend and anticipate that we'll just continue to keep moving forward. Okay, next slide, please. Yeah. We'll be talking about our science. One more slide, please, Jonathan? Thank you. So, overall, science proficiency increased by 5.1% with declines in the lower levels. Five, grades five and 11 showed an eight-point gain in proficiency and advanced levels, and the district continues to perform well above the state in all proficiency categories. Again, we're pleased to see a lot of green. We have a 1.5 decrease in eighth-grade science. Again, we don't like to see the orange up here, but 1.5 is, is not terribly awful, but it was not significant, and we would definitely want to see, we'll dig into the data a little bit more and see what's going on. Next slide, please. And our demographics, we're seeing some nice increase also in our demographics, a few areas that we need to focus in on, but overall, we're seeing nice growth throughout the, our demographics. And, next slide, please. Okay, we have one area here, which is our special ed in the middle-school and eighth grade that we need to kind of take a peek at and look at a little bit deeper, but overall, we're seeing in our special populations an increase in all areas. Next slide, please. Okay, so, taking this data and moving forward into this school year, what we are planning to do and how we're going to build off of the momentum that we have. Again, we're now back to our SOMSD student and all the different areas that we want to focus on to ensure that our students have the supports that they need. We will, in culture and climate, we will be continuing to strengthen our SEL, HIV, climate, equity, and restorative practices to foster belonging. We'll continue to use our NJSky data to guide improvements and also measure successes and maybe having to tweak some areas. We will continue to analyze our attendance data to adjust related interventions as needed and regularly analyze our graduation rate to implement targeted interventions. NJTSS, we will be continuing our work in this area and deepening our, really deepening our work and getting more specific in our, in our interventions. We will be, we, oh, we are going to modernize our NJTSS process by using an online INRS manager through Linkit, which is going to be a game-changer. When you're sitting in an, in an NJTSS meeting, you can pull up all the information on a student that you're talking about, so you see the complete picture of this student, and then it will also hold all the information we need. And then it will also hold all the information we need. It'll collect data for us so that we can start to see trends, whether it is a building looking at maybe a grade level who seems to be having the same issues. Or we can look at it from a curricular area and say, hmm, are we doing, do we need to tweak our curriculum and make things, move things around, maybe something like that? So it's really going to give us another level of data of our students who are struggling and how we can then help us to inform how we can then help our students better. Students, student opportunities, we will expand academic and social, emotional interventions across the schools with tier-two interventions, tutoring, and counseling. So we'll continue our work. A lot of the successful work that we've been doing at Columbia High School with their intervention programs, we will be implementing them at the high school, I mean, at the middle schools, sorry. Instruction will be year three of Eureka Math Square for K-5. We will continue with targeted professional development. We will be supporting the second year of magnetic reading. We've seen a lot of great work coming out and a lot of great data coming out of our iReady program and our magnetic reading. We will, where am I, continue to support iExcel and gathering data and iReady. We will be expanding our iReady into kindergarten through eighth grade with collecting assessment data, giving us more information on our students so we truly understand where their needs lie. We will continue to support, use Linkit this year, this year, and actually in the past few weeks, all of our teachers have been trained in using Linkit. So last year, our focus was on administrators, making sure that they truly understood how to gather and look at their data in the schools. Now we're going to, all of our teachers are being trained so that they can go in and look at their, their students and see direct, they can take all the information that they need. We will, we will support in the implementation of new math program for Eureka Math for grade-level math in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we are also going to begin, we have a nice foundation for ELA. We're at that point, we have a nice foundation for our math programs that we will, that we are going to start to look at our science program for next year and see how we can then do an audit. We're going to do an audit on that and see how we can continue to strengthen our, our science program. And then we will continue to strengthen the support of our middle school, middle schools to target diverse needs of our students. Did you want to add anything?
In terms of, in terms of the data, we're just really looking, NJSLA presentation asks us to compare grade to grade, which is fantastic, but we're also going to go deeper and compare cohorts of students. So the ELA nine, for example, had a drop in ninth grade by twenty-six points. However, when I went into the eighth grade, how they did in eighth grade and now how they did in ninth grade, it was more of a four percent drop. Still a drop nonetheless, we still have to target it, but it's different, right? So now we're comparing how those interventions are hitting our students. How are the, how's the instruction for those specific students? I think intervention manager is really going to help us, really look at the cohorts and not just the grade-to-grade comparisons. So I'm excited about that, as well as not just the intervention piece, but also the enrichment piece, right? Really enriching our curriculum for our students and with gap plans, but not necessarily gap plans. Understanding that we also just need good enrichment for all, as well as tier-two, as well as tier-three, right? So having these platforms and now that the NJSLA would be adaptive, I think it's really going to inform us even more as to where the students lie and really target that intervention, whatever it be, better tier-one, better tier-two, and better tier-three. Our professional development for this year is also focusing on how to enrich tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three, to come alongside with the software, but also the human aspect of our teachers and making sure that we care for their teacher capacity, right? So there's a lot going on, but we're trying to be mindful as we move along with all this new information.
And I think what's also important that we need to think about is that we saw this drop in ninth grade in general, but we are really, we really do believe that having our freshman academy is also going to support ours freshmen, obviously, to, to, that we wouldn't see such a big drop in, in future years.
Really, I, I am truly impressed by the collaboration of the staff and the administration with the, and the central office with freshman academy. So I'm really looking forward to the data for next year. I'm going to move into access, next slide, Jonathan? Thank you. So access is testing for our ML students. It's basically just seeing the student progress. One more slide, sorry. It's the introduction, one more, yeah. Just seeing student progress as, as they develop in their English language proficiency. They take this test and they, they start, you could be from one at beginning all the way to six where they're more advanced. However, our goal is to hit proficiency, which is four point five, to make them eligible for exiting the program. So next slide. Because this is such a small population, some of the data cannot be shown due to suppression laws. But I did, I was able to gather at least, how many students tested? Hundred fifty-seven tested, the different schools where they lie. And then how many were eligible for exiting for this year? Twenty-two were eligible for exiting. It's really not an instructional component as much as it's personal growth of the students. So of course, we come along, we support, we have a phenomenal ML program, our staff and our supervisor really, supervisor really works hard on continuing that, following the students. So I really am proud of our ML system all through K through twelve. So I think we'll continue to help students come through that, for that proficiency. However, they come at different times, so it's not like we have them from kindergarten to twelve grade necessarily all the time. So there's a lot of data that's just true to what we can see and not, we can expose, but know that a lot of hard work gets put into supporting our ML students, and we're excited to just continue to help support that program. Next slide. Same, very similar to our dynamic learning maps, this is our DLM. Oh, thank you, he already knows, next slide. These are assessments for, for students with our most significant cognitive disabilities from whom general state assessments just wouldn't be appropriate, right? So even with accommodations. So our DLM assessments offer these students a way to kind of show what they know, but in a way that's appropriate for them. And it's, it covers English, language arts, mathematics, sorry, English, language arts, the same thing, mathematics, and science. Next slide. So who can take these tests? Just so you're aware, if students in our autism, our MD, LLD, so multiple disabilities, right, learning disabilities, they take the DLM. Our SOFC students in some of our out-of-district placements also take the DLM. Our DLM aligns with their grade levels, subjects tested by the state. So same as our general education population, the third grade through eighth grade tests and the eleventh grade test for ELA in math, and same for science, grade five, grade eight, grade eleven for science. And same as our access, due to not meeting the required minimum participation per grade and the suppression rules, we are not allowed to give you that information. But again, more than ever, have we worked so closely with special services, CPAC, even conversations we've had to really make sure that we're being mindful of who takes a DLM, how we can support them. I have to say, CPAC has been a champion that has really helped us understand even how we have prior professionals in the classroom through testing. Sometimes it's appropriate, sometimes it might not be. But having that conversation and that collaboration has really helped us truly support our special needs populations as much as they deserve. Okay. Any questions?
Just touch on briefly the transition to the new state assessment, starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yeah, so we're currently doing field tests, I'm sure you received the letter. And unfortunately, the field test questions are not adaptive. Right now, they're just being tested, the questions are being tested. So we're not putting too much pressure on our students, they're just kind of testing the format, the system. But what's interesting about the NJSLA adaptive is that it will be adaptive to the student. So to, like, when your students take iExcel or iReady, as they're doing, so they're third grade and they're starting to do their little assessments, classroom instruction, and as they're being, as they go through a diagnostic window, it'll tell us where and what domain. So in geometry, they might be at third grade, but they rock in fractions. So now they'll be at a fifth grade level. So their fifth, their fraction lessons will be given to them at a fifth grade level. But their geometry will remain at third grade and hoping to continue to close the gap or continue to have them grow. The, the NJSLA now will give us that data. So it won't just be whether they met expectations or did not meet expectations. Where did they meet expectations, right? Because right now, for example, math is usually five domains. When you get your results, it says approaching expectations. Where, right? What, geometry, fractions, what am I paying a tutor for? No, no, you don't have to pay a tutor, we got you. But you know what I mean, where, and it even informs us too, like, where are we helping these students? Because that's all it gives us. So through this adaptive performance, I believe that, I'm hoping that that's what they're saying, that the state is going to give us just more to identify where they are at. So we can really target right from the beginning. When we get those results and the teachers have them through Linkit Intervention Manager, we can start the interventions immediately and exactly where it meets them. And even exceeding, what does exceeding mean? They might be one grade, two grades, three grades above. We want to make sure that we're, we're, we're reaching the students that need enrichment as well.
The state's finally catching up.
Yeah. And that will be in the spring. And the same grades of testing, NJGPA for our senior, our juniors will also be adaptive.
Thank you so much. I see we have questions, I saw Saqqa Gable go off, we'll just go in order. You too, and then Jeff, you held your hand up to me.
Thank you both, it's great. Very comprehensive. And it's great to see the, the gains that were made. And just two quick comments. Thank you for touching on not only how teachers will be able to, how they'll be trained and how to access the, their students' data, but then what to do with the data in terms of especially tier-one instruction and that differentiation piece. And happens to be an area of interest, but you know, it's either here or there. But, um, yeah, so thank you for touching upon that. It'll be great to see in the, through CNI, the various PD plans and options that are available for teachers. And the second point was just that another trend to watch will be whether increases in proficiency then translate into more students enrolling in higher-level middle-school math classes and higher-level math, higher-level classes in general at the high school. Is, I don't know, just seeing all the greens, like, wow, like, I'm hoping that kids feel more confident.
Correct.
And, you know, may decide to choose those classes.
Yeah, that's, that's the hope. And, you know, I think for the past few years, our focus has been, been building the foundation, right? I say that quite often, actually. We needed to build and have a solid foundation so that we can send our kids to the next grade level or to a higher level course, feeling that they have what they need to be successful. And I think, especially in the ma, in math, we weren't doing a good job of that just because we had a very outdated program. It was time, we desperately needed something new, and we, and we have that now. And now moving into middle, having at the middle school, it's really exciting to see what our high school teachers will be getting in the next few years. I think it's going to be quite amazing. And, and I do believe the kids will feel more confident in the work that they're doing. And hopefully, our, our goal is to get them to challenge themselves and see if they can, they should have the skills to be able to take on that challenge.
Thank you.
Yes, echoing what word member Saqqa Gable said. Thank you for the presentation. I also just want to call out, it's been exciting to then look at this, sitting on both CNI and Special Services, where we talk a lot about the collaboration and what that looks like, to see some of the fruits of that increased collaboration between the two departments and the outcomes that it's translating into for kids and students and teachers is really exciting. Connected kind of to that, right? Can you talk us through a little bit of what currently we're doing in terms of how are we monitoring like our NG, MTSS systems? And then what you imagine some of this new online manager improving your ability to do? Because I think it is exciting, and no doubt, all the new data systems that we have have really helped us streamline and, and kind of pinpoint the areas that we need to be working on. So we'd just love a little bit more insight on that.
Absolutely. So this is our second year with Linkit. The first year, we really targeted the administrators, the supervisors, to really dive into Linkit to collect all our data. We had to make sure that with our IT to get years of data. So that way, you know, any INRS plans in the prior, any kind of goals, any kind of, anything we had on students to really program it. This year, we've begun our training for Linkit. Our secondary schools currently are, and we're next with our elementary. We wanted to give our elementary a little bit of a break since they were doing the literacy legislation mandate and just been a lot of mandates from the state, so. But we're starting, we're targeting the elementary soon. But I just went to the high school, one of the sessions yesterday, and I, just hearing the teacher saying like, wow, this is awesome. All this on my student really, really moved me, right? Because that's exactly what we need, is to help the teachers. In the past, we've had our Google Forms, which can help, but it's like a little bit messy, right? Like, open this drive, open that sheet, let me look at all these pictures of samples. Where now Linkit's putting it all in one location. When we want to, you know, say, we go through the tier-one checklist, we go through the action plan, and now we feel that it may need child study team support. It's a matter of just clicking and sending it to the child study team, and they have everything in that same location. So again, it's not sharing or duplicating or copying Google Forms. It's literally all in one location. All, the student baseball card, if you will, or student profile will give all kinds of data, the iExcel, the iReady, attendance, right? The standardized test, classroom grades, all in one. And it also then gives you warnings, like, this student may need intervention, right? There's more than one data points that are directing to needing intervention. The student may need enrichment, right? So having that help us out, and then it also provides the teachers interventions for enrichment. So right on the spot, the teacher can click and they will create groups for you. It'll create interventions for you. And when we're, as a nation, at teacher capacity, I think this can be really helpful to our teachers because they can come up with that on their own, but how many hours, they're experts. But at the same time, having it all in one location for them and some interventions already available, I think will be a game changer.
And I think to add to that, what I'm also excited about with our intervention manager is that we can now start to take data and information from all interventions in general, whether it's gift, you know, our, our gap plans or INRS, and start to look at trends. See, get information from it so that we can make informed decisions on curriculum or even at the building level or even the grade level, what might I need to do differently or give more information? So it, it, it gives us a bigger, much bigger picture on any type of trend in the, in, in the MTSS data that we're getting.
I should add, oh, sorry, really quickly, just wanted to add that I think that's exciting and, and seeing on the, you know, end of the diamond with special services, how helpful it's been for those students. But excited to see also potentially, I know a, a pain point has been students with gap plans and what enrichment looks like. So I would love, you know, a year from now or six months from now to hear feedback about, from teachers, from families, how that, this has helped with, with enriching those.
Coming up for enrichment as well for parents. So I'm trying to find the parent information night for giftedness. And, you know, there, there's a lot of movement going in that direction. But I think a lot of times we get caught up on the gap plan, that's like saying every kid needs an IEP. It's, the kid may need enrichment. A kid may need a gap plan, which is like, you know, just like an IP, a student may need intervention, or they might need an IEP. So we have to just be mindful that not only kids with gap plans are getting enrichment, that's not the case, right? So just know that with our data with Naglieri, they might not have, you know, been very much above average in non-verbal, but they were in verbal, then we're going to enrich that, right? We don't need a gap plan to tell us that, right? So, but we will be sharing more information about that. I'm excited about how we're going to now really would target the enrichment part. And that's why I keep repeating it, because we get stuck on the intervention, we get stuck on INRS. But I'm a big champion for that enrichment piece for all.
Thank you. I think we'll have, so Bennett, and then Brown, and then, and then we'll probably call it there because we have another presentation after this, so, and be mindful of time.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think it really vindicates our decision to go with Eureka Math and Magnetic Reading. My question is about, are starting to track the academic results, which may not be discernible of the triple I. So last year's third graders were the first elementary school cohort placed by the triple I. And we don't have like the school-by-school breakdown here. And like, we definitely don't have like, you know, breakdown for each school by sub-populations. And I just wanted to ask if like, you know, that could be shared with like the public before the state comes out with it in the New Jersey School Performance Reports? Because like, it would be interesting to see like, you know, how, you know, various sub-populations are doing at schools. Because there are certain schools where we could infer that like, you know, most of the FRL-eligible kids might be from, you know, out of that neighborhood, so traveling a bit of distance. And I'm just asking for that data, like, you know, when it's available.
Correlation between students that were moved through triple I and their academic progress, is that, I'm sorry, just.
Yes, more or less, you know, to see like, I'm assuming that we don't have like the students coded by who's going to their closest school versus who's going to a non-proximate school. But like, you know, if you look at like FRL-eligible students at Bolden and at Seth, South Mountain, like, you could assume that most of the FRL-eligible students there are probably kids from other neighborhoods who are being bused. And, you know, it would be interesting to track how they're doing.
I was zeroed in on that, no, we've been partnering with special ed right now to just reach all students, but I, definitely, I mean, it would be a conversation we could have in SLTS next steps.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody's our students.
Thank you so much for this presentation and the, the slides, I really, the slides were really great. Really easy to comprehend the information, a lot of information and, you know, packed with.
Don't forget, there's a hundred something page.
And it will be on the website, the long and short.
Okay, perfect, that's great. Actually, that's excellent, thank you for mentioning that. I just had a few comments, and I don't necessarily expect no response now. It's more just making note of what I'm seeing, and I think it pity. It's more just making note of what I'm seeing and I think it piggybacks along a lot of what you observed as well. And I do want to just point out that I think it is hard to see trends with just three years of data. And especially within some of those years you saw up and down, you know? But bottom line, I think the overall message is some progress made. Clearly, we have more to do. And I'm glad that you pointed out ninth grade specifically because for both ELA and math, that really stood out to me as an area where we are not doing as well.
It's hard not to see it and to not address it for sure.
Yeah. But I just wanted to highlight the following, and again, I don't necessarily think it needs discussion because we are, the district is doing a great job of using these new tools. We're going to have a lot more data so we can really start to pinpoint as you've described. But just overall, going forward, I would consider in your slides, when you're looking at kind of increases or decreases over time, think about it from, you know, your first year of data forward as opposed to just last year to this year. Because it's really, I mean, it's not really a trend if it's just one year. Now, the fact that the state testing is going to be changing, that will obviously impact our ability to look at trends, but still even looking, we have the 2023 data. So maybe next year we could look at 20, what would the change was from 2023 to 2025.
We can definitely do that. And then through Linkit, we could even create a five-year one, which is the most we have right now due to COVID.
Yeah, I mean, I think going back earlier than that, I was.
Go back, right?
Yeah, I was thinking about that, but with COVID, it was, it was wonky anyway.
Right now, just for sake of time and to fulfill the state mandate, this is what is asked from the state. But certainly, you know, through curriculum, we can definitely bring in other data, but we have multiple data points, so. But yeah, definitely. We said that, like, we can't sometimes look at one year as not a trend.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just wanted to bring that up.
And that's why I think we're going to try to focus now more on the cohort because that's another thing. Following the student themselves, right? The grade themselves, how they did in third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
And that was part of the conversation with ninth. That's immediately what we did when we saw that red flag. We're like, what's going on here? And so we went back to the cohort.
The grade to grade is good for our own decision-making, for curriculum, right? And instructional practices, but the cohort is really to provide that true intervention to the student.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. That's great. And then I just want to point out a couple other observations, you know, for ELA, I think specifically free and reduced lunch and special education students, they really, they kind of stayed the course. They didn't really improve over time, right? Like free and reduced lunch, 37% met or exceeded expectations in grades three through five, 39% in grade nine. For special education, it was 39% in grades three to five. By grade nine, it was 31%. So actually they decreased. So just kind of, you know, I think those populations, obviously you know this, I'm just kind of saying this for the broader community.
Absolutely. No, thank you.
And then for math, I think a major takeaway for me was that ninth grade and that only 38% of our students met or exceeded expectations for Algebra I and Algebra II.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's really also, when you look at that data, knowing that those are students who took grade level math in sixth, seventh and eighth grade is important to know. And that's, this is exactly why we needed a new program. You know what I mean?
And that's what we separated for you guys, right? Because most of our students take Algebra I in seventh grade. So you know what I mean? The, the students that are taking Algebra I in eighth grade are either new transfers or students that took the gen, regular gen ed, grade six, grade seven, grade eight. And that's also where we've seen often the big decreases. So that's why we knew it was imperative to start with a program for those students.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll be good that the ones, now the high school and the middle school curriculum actually matches as well. Yes. But again, I just wanted to point out the special populations, free and reduced lunch. Only 16% of kids met or exceeded expectations for Algebra I and Algebra II. And for such special education, only 6% of students. So I just want to lift those up. I think those are major areas for focus, as you know, going forward.
Absolutely. And, and just notice that, well, we did it for you. We included the special education population because often we've skipped it. And we're like, you know what? This is important to highlight. So thank you for reminding us of that, the last presentation.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
My questions were answered. Thank you.
Great.
All did a great job with your questions and comments. Thank you. And thank you for the great presentation. We'll have Dr. Gilbert next, right? And, and, and Dr. Wabell. Yes.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Kevin Gilbert, Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Dr. Carrie Wable, Director of Data Planning, Research and Evaluation.
And our two-hour presentation begins now. This is the, you know, we come to you with our self-assessment and our final assessment scores for our HIV work here in our district. And so this is our report on our pre-assessment, our assessment that our ABSs in our schools gave themselves self-assessment. And then I talk about our goals. In the spring, we'll come back with you with the final scores and talk about what, how we did in achieving our goals. Next slide, please. So again, this is how we determine our grades. This is mandated by policy, by state code. Our school climate teams complete the self-assessment by the end of October. The information then that we are reporting to you tonight is what that self-assessment is. And then our goals are determined on what we want to do by, you know, in 2026, by the end of our time. What are some of the things we want to accomplish? We'll let you know how we do that when we come to you in the spring. And so that's also set by some of the work that our school culture and climate teams do at our particular schools. Next slide. Why are you working it? The assessment deals with these particular categories. Each of the categories is broken down and you try to total 26 points. This is programs and approaches, training, instruction and other training programs, curriculum, personnel, school level incident reporting procedures, investigating procedures and reporting standards. And we always, always like to point out, especially when I started in May of 2022, man, it's definitely where we were then and where we're going now. So if you just kind of look and see some of our numbers, we have definitely improved over the years. Next slide. And this is just the timeline and the process of September. Climate teams receive, receive professional learning. Climate teams do their self-assessment and climate team creates some school climate plans. Then October through May for 25, 26, do the implementation and prevention of the opportunities that we have there. Staff continues to take their, do professional learning. And then the climate teams continue to meet to examine data to update their plans accordingly. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wable to walk us through that self-assessment and our goals.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Next slide. And one more. So each of the 26 categories will get in either a zero, one, two, or three. Three means you're exceeding the requirements. Two means you met them. Partially meet and does not meet for, for one and zero. And so if you meet all of the standards, you get a 52. But we always strive to exceed the standards because meets is the bare minimum and exceeding is where you're falling into best practices. And it's really important for us to move into best practices wherever we can. So that's always a goal for, for our district. Next slide. So this is last year's, so we're examining last year, self-assessing this year. These are last year's scores. I'm proud to say that everyone was over a 75. So we're really proud of that. Significantly changed from several years ago. Next slide. So all of the schools in green increased their scores from last year. I do want to point out that two of the schools that didn't increase can't because they are at the highest that you can be at. And, and really, we're, we're proud of this work. A lot of the work, the ABSs are working hard with their climate teams each year to develop more support for our students, more curriculum for our students around anti-bullying, more social emotional support. So we've invested a lot of time and efforts into this. Still more to do, right? We, I say all this and still have four pages of goals for us this year. But we're really, really proud of this work. Next slide. And one more. Thank you. Okay, so, and if you can just click through them. Thank you. So before we get into the slide, I just wanted to remind everyone that last year we took a number of steps. We integrated the New Jersey Bar Foundation Curriculum for Anti-Bullying. We had professional learning for elementary schools and middle schools around restorative justice and community circles. Our middle schools did some targeted lessons on vulnerable populations. And we added some more training around specific populations who experience bullying, such as our LGBTQ community. Students are bullied around religion, ethnicity and ability. So that's what we did last year, which we're really proud of. So this year, I want, just want to commend our schools. All of our schools received a 75 or higher. All of them provided universal strong lessons in HIV last year. Everyone was in exceeded expectations in elements one, two, three and four. And in 24 out of our 26 components, all schools exceeded expectations. And Week of Respect, we exceeded expectations. We do a lot of work for Week of Respect. So we're really proud of that. Next slide. And I might have done that. I'm sorry. If you can keep pressing. So I normally have the clicker. I apologize. So just some, some areas of focus this year. We are seeing bullying investigations in our fourth and fifth grade populations due to cell phones. I just want to remind anyone that's listening that cell phones are supercomputers which have extensive availability to our kids. And so we are handing kids supercomputers very young. And so they're seeing a lot of content that they may not be needing to see, and that is coming out in our, in our schools. So we're going to do some work on that. So that's an area of focus. The second one is additional support when students bully. So it does take some time, right? You can't just give a student one lesson and then they're good to go because they're not going to bully anymore, right? There's a lot of skill-based lessons that we need to provide students over time. So we're continuing to develop those so that our students will get them. Greater support for social emotional learning. Wayfinder, we're finding great success for Wayfinder in grades six through nine. We're also, we just built and it'll be going out next week, Social Emotional Learning Manual for our K five, pre-K through five schools. So we're excited to roll that out. And also additional supports to build skills for students when negative interactions happen. So we want students to have the ability to advocate for themselves. And so last year we started a one district, one, one, sorry, one district, one response initiative. And so we are pushing that out even more this year. Our high school students are going to do some videos for them, what to do. We're all going to respond the same way if someone's having a mean moment. I want to take an opportunity right now to just, just talk about, you know, there are mean moments that happen between kids in schools across, you know, across the country. And it's really important for us to help our, our kids advocate for themselves, to know when they can say, stop, that's not okay. Right? And also what to do when someone tells you to stop. Right? We have to do both. We have to teach students what to do when someone tells us to stop and what to do when we feel uncomfortable with something. So that's what we're really working on this year. Especially in those, in the, in the pre-K through five. How to do that verbally. And then really four through 12, how to do that virtually? How to tell someone to stop when it's happening on the phone? Because when bullying happened 20 years ago, you went home and it went away. And now it's still on your phone. So we want to make sure that the kids know how to help themselves and how to reach out to us if they need us. Next slide. And keep pressing enter. Thank you. So four goals, we're going to provide additional lessons around digital citizenship for our students. We're going to expand training for staff and teachers around social emotional learning and how to support our students when negative interactions occur between students. Not only is that happening during our professional development days, but it's also integrated into our HIV training. That's mandated from everyone from our lunch aids to our administrators. So everyone's getting that training. We're going to expand learning opportunities for our families around digital citizenship. We're hoping to have several luncheon learns. We seem to be getting a lot of traction in luncheon learns for our families. There's a lot of people that show up to those. So we thought that'd be a great opportunity over the next few months for digital citizenship. And building additional supports for students who have bullied, as I mentioned, or initiated negative interactions with peers. So those are our four goals. Next slide. So some of the things we're doing for goal number one, identifying and creating age-appropriate digital citizen lessons that are aligned with the ISTI standards. Common Sense Media has some great ones that we're actually looking at. Establishing a consistent instructional schedule for those lessons. One of the things I worry about when we do things is we do it because it's a hot button topic this year, but what happens next year? So when are those going into the curriculum so they systematically happen? And students are already getting digital citizen lessons, but we want to, we want to beef that up. Building parent companion letters to support anti-bullying and the lessons. I love when parents can, can come home at the dinner table and talk about what we've done so that it's a team effort between all of us. And monitoring our impact and reinforcing expectations through school-wide messaging for positive digital culture. So that's what we're working on there. Next slide, please. We're looking at expanding our, our training and staff, for staff and teachers around social emotional learning. So I just mentioned, we're creating an SCL resource manual. We're providing extra or additional professional learning for the CASL framework, which is social emotional learning framework. That has already started with professional learning in September. We want to provide guidance around tiered support for challenging behavior, which we've already started last year. As students have behavior, sometimes they need a little support and sometimes that support needs to increase. So what does that look like? We want to provide professional learning opportunities for teachers and support staff, including lunch monitors on the one district, one response. And professional learning for restorative justice and equity across the district. And all of that is either started or in the process of being, of planning. Finally, or nope, not finally, goal three, expanding learning opportunities for families around digital citizenship. Like I said, parent seminars, communication for families around the lessons. A central hub on the school website for short videos, tips and facts, fact sheets and recommended tools to help digital responsible citizenship at home. As well as a social media campaign around digital citizenship. We just did a social media campaign for this year around attendance and we want to add one for digital citizenship so that families can see and just be reminded, you know, that we're working together. Last goal this time. We're going to build additional supports for students who have bullied. This has been a multi-year plan. The ABSs will continue to build a library of resources to support our students. And the high school and middle school will identify lessons in Wayfinder and Seven Mindsets, which are both online programs to address bullying. And so those are our goals. Next slide, actually two. Uh, next slide. And one more. There you go. So we just celebrated the Week of Respect. And this is just highlighting what each of our schools wanted to highlight for you. They did things all week, but this is just a little bit of what they did. One of the things we introduced was that every school gets lessons on the same topics for five days in a row. And that's really important because we want a consistent message for every child in the district about bullying. district about bullying, what to do, how to help, how to, you know, how to stand up for ourselves, how to not be a bully. So that was really great. And then they did some really fun stuff like, you know, Crazy Sock Day and Stomp Out Bullying. So that was really great. And that's our story.
Thank you. That was great. I have a comment, and then I'll see if people have questions or comments. One thing, I think the, uh, the lunch training for parents is a great idea. And I would recommend maybe having a portion that teaches parents how to look at the smartphones and put in different limitations. Because I will say, as a parent myself, trying to do that with my middle schooler, it was not as easy as I thought it would be. And so just having a little tutorial on how to do that could be great. I know there's a lot of tech folks in the district that could even create an FAQ to support that.
I can do that as long as no one tells my daughters. Every time I show a parent how to do that, they roll their eyes and they yell at me that I'm ruining someone's life.
Oh, my God, that's so funny.
Yes.
But, well, you know, there's also like ways to just say like how long they can be on the phone, and then it like shuts off, you know, at a certain hour.
Screen time is an amazing thing.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, you can just send them to me. Tell them they can yell at me for it. Any, any questions on this? Okay. Yeah. Well, you didn't get a chance to go. Why don't you go in there?
Sure. Mine is quick. And I think I asked this last time as well, but can you just remind us how our schools are doing these self-assessments in a way that is objective? Because, I mean, I, I think I'm pretty great. Not everyone necessarily agrees, but as far as how they're choosing what score to give themselves.
Sure. So there is specific, so the state offers or provides a rubric, a very specific criteria that you have to meet in order to get a zero, a one, a two, and a three. What they then have to do, because we can be, you know, the state can check this work. Every anti-bullying specialist has to provide documentation for every score that they've given. And so they upload that to me, and I review all of, all of that. So that's really important, is that just because you say you do it, doesn't mean you actually do it. So we, we collect evidence for every standard.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, a great present, another great presentation tonight, and I love the areas of focus for 2025. I agree with the help, especially with cell phones and helping parents manage that. It's really important. And I understand this presentation is rooted in the requirements set forth by the state. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here, as you do this presentation a year from now, to also include data on HIB complaints and investigations by schools over time?
So generally, we do those together.
Yeah.
Because SSDS has that. But SSDS didn't release, didn't open up till yesterday, the day before. So you'll get that next month, actually.
Okay. Okay. Because that really does provide a holistic picture.
It does, yeah. So that'll be with all of the suspension data and things like that. That all comes together. I normally try and pair them together. It just didn't work out timing-wise, and, and this is due, you know, this month.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we have the business administrator update. Mr. Moody.
All right, all right. Thank you. So Jonathan, if you wouldn't mind posting that presentation. Actually, the, the other one, the presentation, this will be second. No, not, not Ritzer Milestones. Actually, it's, uh, it's called the, it's the Health Benefits Presentation. It's a PowerPoint. And that's not the right timeline, anyway. Yeah, it's me. It's all, it's all Regina Eckert's fault.
I've got a lot of questions. Get ready.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right. So there's a couple of things that I'll be presenting on here this evening during the Business Administrator Update. And the first will be the, the prospective change of health plans. Second, I'm going to talk about the Ritzer Project Timeline. And third, a little bit of a construction update. So I want to start here because, well, first, I want to take folks back to our budget season. I don't even like referring to it as budget season because budget season is all year. But back in April, May, we received a warning from the state that health plan insurance costs are likely to increase by 37%. This was essentially them ringing the alarm across the state that school districts, government entities really need to be thinking about that eventuality because, you know, it was pretty much a certainty. So back in May, we started a process. I reached out to three brokers and had those brokers go out to all of their networks to start looking at potential health insurance plans that might prevent us from having these significant increases in costs. So, you know, what we found at that point was the state health benefit plans, premiums, have increased literally by 74% between 2021 and 2026. You know, these costs were driven by rising costs of specialty drugs, GLP-1s, medical inflation, medical advancements, cancer treatments, et cetera. So for the upcoming plan year, ultimately, when they came out with their numbers, it was not 37%, which was a blessing, but it was 31%, which was still a tremendous cost increase and essentially meant that the $20 million approximately that we spent in health insurance premiums in 24 to 25 would likely increase to 27 million. Now, that is a tremendous increase and one that our budget could not sustain. So we started the process of really digging into how we might avert this looming crisis. So this dramatic increase, you know, even this sentence here, "This dramatic increase is a significant financial burden that if accepted would require deep cuts elsewhere in the budget impacting educational programs and staff." Let me make an adjustment to that. That dramatic increase would have really just sent us off the, the financial, the fiscal cliff here because broad deep cuts will be required in the coming budget season. Next slide. So on this slide, it kind of just shows you that, that trajectory from 2021 up through 2026 and then into projections around 2027. And as you can see, the darker bar charts are medical increases, and then the lighter bar charts are prescription increases. So you see the drivers of growth in premiums. And it's pretty blatant here that in the 26, 27 projected year, we're looking for, the state health benefit plan will likely see much more dramatic increases that are, that are even slated for 2026. Next slide. So we started a process, and I mentioned that I went out to these three brokers and had them scour the state for potential relationships, potential plans that could keep us out of this crisis while doing what we were called upon to do as district leadership, which is provide the best in the way of coverage for the, for the full body of staff. Now, we have to do that by providing something that is equal or better in plan structure, plan design, and cost, which is a daunting challenge. So we did the comprehensive search. These three brokers went out looking at any potential relationships that they could find. And in fact, so it was Brown and Brown, Eagle Rock, and, and also Gallagher, our existing broker. So essentially, we only, of the three brokers we went out to, they could only bring back one respondent that was willing to quote us, you know, for a potential plan. And that was Eagle Rock and the Maritain, Maritain being the third party, the TPA, third-party advisor. So, and then we also got a proposal from Homestead. Okay? So then we started the process then of socializing this and involving the broad-spectrum stakeholder groups from within the district, right? That means Askin, Semia Leadership, teachers, staff, district leadership board, all constituencies involved in the thought process, asking questions, myriad questions, getting answers, and really workshopping, you know, what could be done to avert this potential crisis. Next slide. So after a thorough review, and of the respondents, we only had two. This is the Eagle Rock-Maritain relationship and, and Homestead. We, we felt that the Eagle Rock-Maritain relationship, we wanted to proceed with the process of, of evaluating that one because it offered benefits, you know, over the, the other relationship, and they could meet the need of providing something same or better in terms of plan design, cost structure, and network coverage. So that detailed analysis they provided for us, they landed on a 94% to 95% overlap with the existing Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage for the district, which was the best circumstance that we could hope for. And as I mentioned before, during this process, myself, the superintendent, district leadership, human resources team, Askin, Semia Leadership, we all got together to really provide as much in the way of detailed, specific questions to these brokers as possible to really come, come to a final consensus on the best path forward. Next slide. So what you can see here is that in the 24, 25 fiscal year, we had expenditures of $20,500,000. During our budget season, you know, we projected a 15% increase. We felt that was, you know, sufficient. And then, you know, we're looking at what a 31% increase would be in the event, or actually when we, once we were made aware of the likely premium increase at the state plan, and that's approaching 27 million. However, with the Eagle Rock-Maritain relationship, we're looking at a projected, approaching 23 million, which really does constitute approaching a $5 million savings from what would have been. It also approaches, approximates, approaching a $1 million savings from what, from where we budgeted in, for the 25, 26 year. So we've, we've got increasingly strong feelings that this really was the option for us, given these numbers, given the, the budget and cost projections that we see here. So next slide, please. So this next slide is kind of a breakdown of self-insured costs because essentially we evaluated any potential networks that could quote us. We evaluated, or applying for membership within the state health insurance fund. Those funds actually allow for, you know, lower premiums because they are more selective in terms of their populations. We did not get quotes from them. But this self-insurance options that we were presented by, you know, Maritain, by Eagle Rock, and Fairview Associates, is kind of captured here. The current plan, again, in the 24, 25 year was 20 million, 20.5 million. In the proposed plan, we have these categories of charge. As you can see, because it's a self-insured plan, the self-insured plan means that the district will be taking on all liability for claims. So instead of paying a fixed cost of $20,500,000, we, we have the 1.6 million, but then we have to take care of any estimated medical claims. Those total out to about 16.5 million based on the projections from our broker. Then there's this A4 surcharge medical, and that's, the A4 surcharge is really, it's the patient-centered outcomes research institute fee. It's mandatory of any self-insured plan. And then that comes in at around 282K. And then our, our broker estimates the potential prescription claims, the RX, and that's the five and a half million there. Then we also get prescription drug rebates, which totaled to about a million. So that's how we land at the perspective or the projected self-insured premium cost of 22.87 million, or, you know, approximately around 23 million. Next slide. So just to spend a moment on the difference between fully insured plans and self-insured plans. Fully insured plans, like the state plan, is where we pay a fixed premium to the state. The state then assumes all financial risk for medical claims and prescriptions. However, the premium also includes state administrative costs, profits, and state premium taxes, which are returned to the state regardless of our district's claims experience. That said, in a self-insured type of plan, like the one we're proposing, the district assumes the financial risk for our employer's actual healthcare costs. We also have the third-party administrator, Maritain, that handles all the claims processing and network management. Now, under this model, the district pays for the medical and claims that they, that are incurred. So where we have favorable claims years, claims experience years, the district retains those savings rather than, you know, having the state retain the surplus. This gives the district greater control and transparency over its healthcare spending. Now, with what's required in any self-insured plan, if we're taking on the risk of actually paying for the claims that occur amongst our population, then we have to insulate ourselves from risk by having this stop-loss reinsurance. So essentially, it's insurance on the insurance, right? So it protects against any high-cost claim. So there's specific stop-loss and aggregate stop-loss. Specific stop-loss protects against any high-cost, cost claim from any single individual employee or dependent. The aggregate stop-loss insurance provides a total ceiling on the dollar amount of eligible expenses for the district will pay in a given contract period. So if we eclipse that, and, and in the aggregate, then this insurance kicks in, we pay for that insurance, but in fact, it serves us well by also taking care of those claims in the event something outsized happens. Next slide. So, you know, our conclusion here through all of this analysis over the past, literally seven months, is that, you know, moving to a self-insured health plan is a really strategic necessity because it addresses the unsustainable increase in the state health benefit plans. Now, I should also say that a lot of our neighbors are already, have already made the move. You know, Newark, Irvington, Orange, East Orange, you know, a lot of North Jersey folks are even moving to the same Eagle Rock Management-Maritain relationship that we're proposing. So for all these reasons, district leadership is recommending that the Board of Education passes the necessary resolution today in order to approve this transition and allow for the district to move forward with a sustainable, modern health insurance plan that protects our budget and provides excellent benefits for our employees. The fact is, we have a short window to take action here. Here we are, October 30th. And in order to exit the state plan, we need to submit a, you know, a form to exit by November 1st because it has to be done 60 days prior to any potential start date. So essentially, in the event we pass this resolution today, we'd be moving forward with an exit from the state plan and then moving forward with open enrollment planning for the next health insurance plan. So if you wouldn't mind going to the other chart, even though it's, it's small, I just want to put it up there as an example of the kind of communications and, you know, single-pagers that we'll be sending out over the period of time in the event the Board... that we'll be sending out over the period of time in the event the board decides to move forward with this. But, and this is a multi-page sheet, one that none of us can see, but-
Can they zoom in at all?
But essentially, you know, what you have here is a demonstration that the current state health plan and the Eagle Rock-Maritain Aetna plan that's being proposed are equivalent in every way and even better in some ways. So this is the kind of information that will be distributed in the event the board decides to move forward, and it'll have detailed, point-by-point comparisons as well as assurances that, that things will move forward smoothly. We have a commitment that in the event we move forward, that our third-party administrator and broker will be, you know, present at our schools and really there for us to, to handhold us through the transition and answer questions. But I tell you what, Askin-Somia Leadership and the District Leadership have done a lot of question and answering, receiving in the run-up to this conversation. So I'll stop there. Any questions?
Thank you for all that information. I really appreciate a breakdown of kind of the costs and the historical costs as well. I just had two questions. One is, you said that the state premiums have increased by 73.9% between 2021 to 2026. Is that the employer portion of the premiums or the employee portion of the premiums or both? I'm trying to get a sense of how much have staff, how much have staff premiums gone up over those years?
Well, you know, the thing about it is, when you're talking about premiums, you're talking about that which the school district pays to the, to the provider, right? And then within the premiums, there's going to be the, you know, employer's share and the employee's share, right? So when I'm making that reference about how much they've gone up, that's premiums in their entirety. Now, each district, each, you know, relationship, you know, that seeks to cover the population, each district leadership sets the premium levels, right? So we currently, you know, if we are to move to a new plan, we would have equivalent premium levels. So everything, the 11.5% projected increase would be the total premium projected increase. And both employer and employee would experience that same amount of increase.
Right. So, so are you, are you saying that the increase is actually 22-point-something percent? And that the employer is paying 11? Are you saying that 11 and it's split?
That's correct. So if we had stayed in the state plan and we were about to experience, or if we do stay in the state plan and we're experiencing a 31% increase, the employer and employee's share would grow by that amount. Because the premiums in their entirety would increase 31%.
So are they split half and half?
No, no, it's, it's, it's whatever the employer and employee are set to pay in the current situation, it would increase by 31%.
Okay.
So the share of the total would remain the same. They would both increase at equivalent levels. Same in our scenario that if we decide to move to, you know, Eagle Rock-Maritain, if we're looking at an 11.5% increase in total premiums paid to the broker, the employee and employer's share would grow up, you know, commensurate with each other.
Okay. So I mean, just looking at the 73.9%, it looks like there's generally been, been an increase in premiums around, I don't know, 13 or 14% each year.
Yeah, whatever was on the chart.
Okay, because this is projected to have an 11.3% premium increase if we switch over.
Yeah.
Okay. And then with the stopgap insurance, it wasn't clear to me because I looked in the resolution, the one resolution is the 23 million, and then the other resolution is for the broker. That's $45 per employee per month, which is about 400,000 or so. Does that include the stop-loss insurance?
The 23 million projected total cost includes both the stop-loss insurance as well as the per-employee, per-month broker fee.
Oh, so then why are there two resolutions?
Because we had to do them separately from a procedural standpoint.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So two questions, I guess, going to that stop-loss coverage. Do we, do you have an understanding or the specific numbers as far as when that kicks in on an individual basis as well as for the aggregate coverage?
I do not have them right here at the moment. However, they will be known to us absolutely. They will share that with us, the thresholds for, for both single and aggregate.
Okay, because obviously, well, it seems like this is the right plan. The degree to which we could have an abnormal set of circumstances and our claims go way up, it's important for us to understand what amount of protection we're going to have.
Oh, well, we'll be completely protected in either circumstance. So as soon as we eclipse the threshold, because we paid for the stop-loss insurance, which is reinsurance, which is insurance on insurance, as soon as we eclipse either the single or the aggregate threshold, it kicks in and then covers the remainder.
It's just a matter of whether the threshold is here or here.
Right.
Right.
But we will have already paid for the insurance anyway, so they would take care of the claim. You see how that works?
No, I understand. It's a matter of, you know, if we, if claims for one year were 50 million versus 500 million, at what point, at what number of million will they say, this is how much you have to pay? Because that could be a big unexpected expense.
Well, not for us. See, that's, that's the whole nature of this. Because when you have stop-loss insurance, it's to stop the loss. So essentially, you pay your insurance premium for this additional stop-loss insurance, and that's all you're on the hook for. So if it get, if we eclipse the threshold in terms of a individual or aggregate claim, that insurance kicks in, they pay those claims, and we will have only paid the premium for the stop-loss insurance.
So once we pay that premium, the amount that we're talking about, that is the total cap. We know-
That's it.
Got it. And the other piece here, obviously with self-insured plans, the district has an incentive or a hope at least that we're not going to be paying out as much. And if I was a teacher, I'd probably be a little bit concerned about that. So under this plan, who is it who is deciding what claims are approved and denied? I mean, I assume it's not going to be you guys in the central office.
Can you give me that first part of that question again?
So we're paying the specific, direct amounts of medical costs, right? So the fewer costs we have, the less we're paying.
Right.
And I'm sure that folks who know they're going to have claims to submit are worried about, are they going to be approved or not? Who in this chain, between the district, Maritain, Aetna, who is actually making that decision of what's being allowed?
Nothing changes in that regard. Aetna's a network. They would be making those decisions around, you know, plan, design, providers, what claims, how they address any individual claims. It's just like it happens today.
So that we don't have any impact on, say, who wants to-
By no means. We have no discretion. We're completely separate from that. We simply, simply will have retained the insurance and insulated the district and everyone from the risk of any exorbitant claims, right, by, through the stop-loss protection. And there, the network would be the Aetna POS 2 network, and it would act extremely similarly to the current network that's in place today. It's just a POS 2 versus a PPO. Those things used to be a departure from each other, but they have reconciled over the past years. And in fact, POS 2 offers a bit more flexibility than a PPO because we, there's a national network. But to answer your question, we're not involved in that. Okay.
Thanks for this. I don't expect you to have the, the answer straight away, but it's a good follow-up is to know on the stop-loss, what are their exceptions to, to certain coverages, right? They might have carve-outs to say that your exorbitant costs might only cover X, Y, and Z, but not something else, some, some of these other conditions. It's a good thing to understand because certain, certain stop-loss coverages won't cover what they call million-dollar babies or premies or whatever it is. There could be scenarios that do not fall under that. And then while we're, we're making a, a short-term run to make a decision for the new year, for the long term, it's a good thing to get some understanding as what are the top three, top five drivers of the medical cost? Skeletal, cancer, whatever, whatever it might be, to then look at alternative routes that we could take for carve-outs on ourselves, right? So we have to be able to do it now because it's a couple of months away, but for forecasting for the future, because that's where the biggest increases are.
Now, thank you for that question because, one, we did pose that question to the brokers, right? And they assured us that there is, there's no, with our stop-loss protection, there's no scenario that we ultimately are on the hook for. Okay, that's one. Two, I'm glad you raised the point about being self-aware, right? Because essentially, when you have self-insurance, let's just, when you have full insurance and you're fully insured by a separate network, you do not have visibility into your claims experience at a granular level. So you don't know what's affecting your claims, right? You're only given certain higher-level reports, right? When you go self-insured, you have full visibility into the granular detail and the nature of the claims experience. As such, it gives you the ability to be very intentional about how you shape the plan moving forward. You're in the best-case scenario. If we moved it to the self-insured plan, we'll have the most in the way of visibility into our claims experience so we can incentivize certain things. We can, we have a great deal more flexibility to really meet the needs of the, the full-spectrum staff and tailor things such that those savings that we're experiencing year over year from declining claims, we then put back into our reserve. So that serves us moving forward.
I wanted to say something real quick while we're, and then we can go to you. I just wanted to make sure we also clarify for people because we're saying a lot of acronyms like PPO and POS, which is not point-of-sale, it means something else. But so-
Point of service.
Yeah, exactly. So I appreciated, once you had educated us before this meeting, that even though this, we're not, we're going to something that is not a PPO, we still, this current plan will not force teachers to get referrals for specialists. It actually acts like a PPO even though it's not called a PPO. So anything else you want to add to that?
Absolutely. So the only, I would say that traditionally, PPOs or insulate you from the risk, right, because you, you'd have to get a referral, you don't have to get a referral. In this POS 2 plan, you do not have to get a referral to go out of network, right? You know, but just like, or in both scenarios, certain kinds of cases require a pre-certification from Aetna. Okay, not from your primary care physician. And so that's the same scenario. So we, we've been very comprehensive and intentional in looking at both plans in excruciating detail to determine that we're moving to something, if we decide to do so, that is the same or better. And I'm just really, you know, I feel really blessed that, and we should all feel blessed, that, that we were able to find something because, you know, they also asked for additional claims experience for like the last three months, right? And because they have to scrutinize this in, in extreme detail. And let's just say, we were able to still qualify. Whereas the health, health insurance funds and all of the other brokers, we were not able to qualify. And guess what? Next year, we may not be able to qualify for even this kind of thing if we, if we don't get in today. So it's like, it's a tremendous blessing, one that we're trying to kind of, you know, drive the district through this, this window of opportunity to insulate ourselves from, from, from risk moving forward and to provide the best in the way of care and insurance to, to the population.
Thank you for some of those visuals. Wasn't all, but I did say my email, just some would be great. I just want to clarify Jerja's question because I think I got two different responses. So the 11% premium is applicable to both the district and all staff members, teachers, supervisors, principals.
So the premium in its entirety is what the district pays, right?
Right.
There's two components of it, employer and employee, right?
Yes.
So meaning, you know, that 11.5% that's projected to grow will be shared by employer and employee at the same percentage share, you know, in, in prior years, you know, it's, so if it were to go up 31%, the premiums for employees and employers would go up by that amount. Unless there was some intervention at the district level, which said, we're going to take care of more or we're going to take care of less, okay?
Yep.
So that's, that's really the circumstances. What we're talking about is the aggregate premium growth. And, you know, we can set it up such that the contribution remains the same year over year.
Got it.
The share of contribution.
Got it. You mentioned a lot of conversations with Somia Leadership, ASK Leadership. What were, I'm just curious, what were some of the main concerns? Because I know we talked a lot about how everything is, you know, better or the same, but I imagine there still had to be some-
Oh, yeah, sure. There's, there's a lot of concerns expressed around, can I keep my doctor? What's the overlap in, in network coverage? Like you're saying it's 95%, but, you know, how do we know that? What's the methodology for the, the calculation for that, you know? How can I find out if my individual doctor is covered, you know, that, you know, a lot of, a lot of that? And then if I want to keep my relationship with my doctor, can I, you know? A lot of those kinds of, any kind of question that you might imagine really was kind of tossed our way and relayed to brokers and third-party administrators around plan, design, plan, structure, costs, you know, prescription drugs, in-state, out-of-state, things like that. And again, what we found is that particularly going to a POS 2, it's even more beneficial because it's a national network. So it's going to cover in-state or out-of-state, right? But a wide, wide array of questions. And so we also had our broker partner that we would move to in this situation create an FAQ document, which is extensive, right? And an array of glossy materials that are going to, you know, really serve the district well in educating folks and making, bringing comfort to the transition.
All right, thank you. I know I've talked about it a lot, even just in, in personnel, and I know we've talked about it in FFT, but communication on a huge change like this is, is really, is really key. And I know that even just from my experience, even in a healthy budget situation, any organization is always going to be evaluating every couple of years. So I, I understand the need for that, but that's why I wanted to clarify and get a little bit more into that because I do think it is important for folks to understand why it's happening and what the, what the, the process was and how you engaged with everybody.
Absolutely.
The one, one last question, I mean, you talked about a couple of districts, neighboring districts that have already done this. I'm just curious, do you know if that was done recently, like in, you know, in the past year or two? And then also if they've stayed on that plan and if there have been any, I guess, challenges switching from state to private? Any known ones, anyway?
Yeah. I will say that, you know, we've been presented a list of quite a few of our neighbors who have done this change in the past several years in anticipation of these growing costs. I mentioned Newark, Irvington, East Orange, Orange, you know, so many. I have a list of maybe 12 or 13. Now, we didn't do a comprehensive poll of their experiences, but I know the BAs that I know and the assistant BAs that I know around North Jersey are extolling the virtues of their moves. Not just from a budgetary standpoint, but from a, you know, a user experience standpoint. So, you know, we did a lot of back and forth, a lot of talking to folks. And, you know, we got really positive guidance.
So I want to be mindful of time because we still have quite a bit to cover tonight with community, committee reports and public speaks. So I know you wanted to give an update on facilities or LRFP. Maybe you could just do like a verbal update on those things.
I'll do that real quick.
But what I was going to say is, and I'd like to make sure that the presentation that you, that you gave today, along with that comparison chart can be put on the website in our Board of Ed section that's on, like, presentations. Same for the NJSLA and the HIB. If we can do that next week, that'd be great. So, but I know you have some positive news to share about progress we're making on LRFP.
Absolutely, yeah. And I can, I can run through that really briefly. So essentially, what I was going to talk about, and if you happen to have that visual, you could throw it up, but I can speak through it as well. Essentially, as we all know, that we started a process of moving towards attempting to really modernize Ritter Field, and we were underway, that process is underway, and we're bringing it forth to the Board of School Estimates. It began with the process of updating our- It began with the process of updating our long-range facilities plan, our LRFP. We submitted that on September 12th. You know, then we did a project submission to the Department of Education to start the process of trying to get debt service aid in the event we move forward with a development of Ritzer. That resolution or that acceptance by the DOE requires that your long-range facility plan be current. So those two things were happening in parallel. But essentially, our long-range facilities plan was approved on October 15th. I have the letter right here. I'm sorry, October 5th. Department of Education has approved the major amendment to the long-range facilities plan submitted by the South Orange Maplewood School District pursuant to the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, PL 2000, NJSA 18A7G. We have our letter here. So that allowed for the DOE to continue with its process of evaluating our project for debt service relief. And that process happens over some time. Either they give us an answer or if 55 days have elapsed, I'm sorry, no, that's actually Maplewood Planning Board. So DOE starts their review once our LRFP is finished. Our LRFP has been approved, so the DOE is doing, has their review, our review underway. Then we have our site investigation. This is happening now, October, November 2025, where, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, our teams are doing measurements, boring holes, surveying, and really planning out, you know, what's possible. That's happening over October, November. And also the design development phase underway, November through January. And then next would be the permitting. As you can see up there, that's item number three. Permitting from January through March. Now, we also have to submit for a courtesy review of the Maplewood Planning Board. We would do that, we're targeting that for December 9th. In the event we do not make that, we believe we may, then we would target the January meeting. So then the DOE approval has to come through after the Maplewood Planning Board review. So that DOE approval, we're anticipating for February 2026. At that point, we would do a board resolution to the BOSE to follow the DOE approval. Then construction documents in March, bidding for the project in April of 2026, award and contracting in May, and construction to begin June through December of 2026. So that's, the timeline is captured here. There's some other details that I mentioned, but we are on the path, we are making, making headway through these milestones as we approach the next items on the list. So that's, that's Ritzer Project timeline.
Thank you so much. Okay, if you have any questions, send them to FFT Chair Bill, Bill Gifford, because we need to move along. So next is Board President update, and then we will have public speaks and committee report. Okay, so some updates. Our first community feedback session for the five-year strategic plan process with the NGSBA will be January 15th, 2026, at 6:30 PM at Columbia High School's Media Center. More details will come soon to the community from the district on how to RSVP and attend, but I wanted to announce that date now so you can hold it on your calendars. Everyone in the community is invited. But everyone can't come because we don't have that much space in the media center. So RSVP early. But there will be three sessions, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to go. Tonight, we vote on the, oh, is it 2026? Yeah, I know, I just noticed. 2026, 2027 school year calendar, which enables our community to plan in advance, much earlier than before. We ensured that the district spoke to the YMCA to confirm they will have before and after care available on the first day of school, which will be September 1st, 2026. So tonight, per our board goal, we have formed the new Community and Revenue Partnerships Committee, tasked with advising the district on developing new revenue streams. Thank you to Board Member Kapadia for stepping up as chair and Board Members Brown, Saqib Gable, and Bennett for joining this committee. It'll probably meet like every other month or something, we'll see. But thank you so much, we're excited for this. Special thanks to the Music and Arts Project for their donation of approximately $13,000 to Columbia High School's fine and performing arts teachers, totaling up to about $1,000 per educator for supplies and equipment to support their classrooms and programs. Tonight, we also vote on our 26, 27 school year budget calendar, which includes policy-focused mandates and milestones, as well as oversight mechanisms like a Q1 2025 review of budgeted versus actuals, which will be coming up in a few weeks. Please note that the audit presentation date is pending and could be delayed because of the federal government shutdown impacting the ultimate timing of the fiscal year 2025 audit due date. Normally, that audit review happens in February, so we shall see. Lastly, I want to remind our community that the district is looking at making adjustments to our intentional integration initiative, AKA triple I, to make it more sustainable. It's not because we don't believe in integration, it's not because we aren't listening to the experts. In fact, the district is looking at models that the ALPS group had originally suggested more than five years ago. The district has been taking a close, honest look at how the rollout of our triple I is not only impacting our budget, but also affecting our families in collaboration with the Black Parents Workshop and the board. It is especially important to look at the impact on families of lower socioeconomic backgrounds and families of color who have carried the heaviest burdens of the current model. For decades, the ALPS group has advised districts on integration models across the country and as close as Montclair. And they are now helping us assess and refine our approach. I take my privileged position as a board member very seriously as we have the unique opportunity to look at data first before the public and directly receive feedback from community members on an ongoing basis. We have a responsibility to listen. Students are not just data points to check a box. When the ALPS group confirmed that schools were diversified well at 5%, and this was a success story in the 2025 Spring Triple I Review Meeting, they had not actually seen the experience survey feedback. The success story for them was focused on data, not lived experiences. Here are two anonymous examples from that survey. "A late start time does not work for our family as Dad commutes to the city at 6:00 AM and Mom is a teacher. We've had to use before care to make it feasible, but it's financially and logistically challenging," end quote. Second example. "This integration plan has caused so much hardship on marginalized groups. Parents who work outside standard hours, don't have cars, or can't afford before or after care. How does this make sense? When you dig into the details, talk to families directly, and review student experiences and imbalances in those experiences, especially for our students of color and lower SES, a few things become clear to me. An algorithm with 5% variance, isolated placements, no-zone neighborhoods, and no-control choice SES-neutral transfer process, which Michael Alves has suggested, creates an unstable program. After the conversations I have had with the lower SES and Black families in particular, I'm advocating that we no longer have unrealistic expectations of our integration model, and I support that modifications are necessary to make this program more sustainable. Across the country, school districts continuously review their integration initiatives and adjust their models. Montclair reassesses its variance annually, which ranges from 15% to 25% per their policy. Board of Education policies are regularly updated and reviewed. It is one of the most important aspects of being a board member. Modification should not be misconstrued as deviation. Future adjustments to the triple I are not a step backward. They are an evolution grounded in listening, evaluating, and doing better for our students. Lastly, we all see tensions are getting high in the community on this topic, especially at its currently, as it is currently, the Board of Education campaign season." Can we please bring the temperature down a little bit? Bringing the temperature down would be great right now, online and in person. People will have differing opinions on the triple I, and it's okay to agree to disagree, and we can do that respectfully. And now I'll read the Board President's statement. "The school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, it has thoroughly been reviewed by the administration, the superintendent of schools, and the Board of Education, after which it is placed on the agenda for board discussion and action at a public meeting." Hearing of individuals, okay. "Thank you for coming in person and joining us online this evening. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education values public involvement and respects that you've taken time to address the board at tonight's meeting. As this is the board's business meeting, a friendly reminder to please be respectful as we take into consideration your valuable input, which will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. The board does have time limits by policy, and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening. Each individual will be given three minutes to speak. The first public comment period is usually limited to an hour with priority often given to items related to the meeting agenda, and the second may be limited to 30 minutes. Please remember to say your full name and town where you reside." Okay. Okay, great. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Normally, not this late when we get to public speaks. So, Rosio. Yo, uh.
Rosio Lopez, president of Somaya, Maplewood resident, Spanish teacher at Columbia High School. Today, you're boarding on something that it really touches really, really deep. That is the health insurance of more than 500, 600 families. Since I've been here, and it's 25 years this year, we always had Blue Cross, Brazil. We have never had Aetna. We don't know about that plan. We used to have traditional, then we went to PPO. Now it looks like you want to put us in POS two. Piece of, sorry, POS two, right? And the truth of the matter is, yes, we went, Somaya went twice, to two different meetings with the brokers. And we sent some emails where we got some answers, and that's all the discussions we have had about insurance. That's all the meetings, okay? There is no other meetings that we had about health benefits, but those two with the brokers. I understand the need for money for the district. I understand the difficult decisions that sometimes people has to make because of budgets. But I also want to ask you, if you're going to vote for this, I'm just hoping that you did your judiciary duty and you checked every single thing. If you feel that you check every single thing, if you hire an expert to check both of the insurances, right? An expert, not a broker that is a salesman that is going to tell you whatever you want to hear. Then I'm, go for it, you know? Do whatever you have to do. I can tell you, yesterday, we got the list, finally, the list of Medicare Mark, which is going to be our prescription list. I already looked for a couple of medicines that they don't cover. It will have to be another generic, right? Different one, okay? Some of us will have to change, already changes. Then it looks like out of network. Depending on who you go, the insurance might not cover the same. Again, I don't have 100% answers. My problem is not doing this change. My problem is, I don't feel we have all the answers yet for such a big thing. I have some members with cancer that they're going through treatment right now, and they're freaking out. And I'm concerned for them. If you're healthy, like lucky for me, unhealthy enough. I have little things, like normal. So this might not change my life too much. But I have members that this is a life or death situation. And it doesn't matter, we put a grievance. By the time the grievance is over, or we put litigation, that person cannot die. So I just ask you, if you're going to do this decision tonight, I ask you to please make sure that you had all the information that you needed to make this decision. That's all. And if you don't have it, table it and wait a month and do it appropriately. So if you got, because the information I got sometimes, it was from the internet, from the district, or from AI, I think. So I don't know how much I can trust, so I just ask you for that, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Quali Telusford, Dr. Quali Telusford.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Quali Telusford, president of South Orange. I'm here to talk about triple I and why it's important for the district to remain committed to the work and stay the course. Triple I was created to correct longstanding socioeconomic imbalances in our schools, and the data shows that it's working. Every elementary school is moving toward the 5% variance target that ALPS groups itself determined was the best for this district as described in their year-one report. That balance matters. It means that no single school bears a disproportionate share of economic disadvantage, and every student benefits from learning in a more representative environment. Now we're hearing proposals to raise the variance to 10%, remove the middle schools, and to increase proximity-based placements. These are not small adjustments. Even by the ALPS group's own analysis, raising the variance would result in only about a 3% increase in students attending their closest school, roughly 15 students. That minimal change is not worth the risk of weakening integration. We also have to remember that it is still in progress. We haven't yet seen a fully-integrated elementary school, and we have yet to see how this generation of students will fare in later years. Until that happens, we can't claim to understand its long-term impact or justify changing it before it has matured. To be clear, I'm not opposed to testing new models or reviewing data, but those efforts must start with the right questions. Will this change improve integration or increase segregation? Will it reduce imbalance or make it worse? Does it expand opportunity or does it narrow it? Proximity alone cannot be the goal. A system that recreates neighborhood divisions isn't efficiency, it's resegregation by geography. We keep hearing words like efficiency and sustainability, but true sustainability means maintaining equity, not cutting corners that reintroduce segregation. The most efficient system is the one that works for every child, not just those who live closest to their school. What families are asking for isn't a retreat from integration. They're asking for better operations, transportation that works, expanded before and care, before and after care options, and school cultures that foster real connection. That's how we build shared experiences and a stronger community. Integration isn't what's broken, it's what's working. The progress we've made under triple I is too significant and too hard-won to risk undoing now. Integration is not a checkbox or a bus route. It's a commitment to what kind of community we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Telusford. Next, we have Thayer Joshua.
Good evening. My name is Thayer Joshua from South Orange, New Jersey, and I have two kids in our school district. I am here this evening to address the district's latest statements on the Intentional Integration Initiative, specifically at the middle schools. The district is planning to remove triple I from middle school because, in their words, "Currently, 91% to 93% of middle school students already attend their closest school, making the process more efficient and geographically consistent." This reasoning completely ignores the SES differences between the two middle schools before the implementation of triple I. In 2021, 2022, 12% of MMS students were classified as low SES versus 8% of SOMs, which is a 50% difference. Not to mention that in 2122, MMS had 33% Black student population versus 22% of SOMs, again, a 50% difference. Let me be clear. Both schools suffer when they do not reflect overall diversity of our district. Furthermore, the rising sixth grade is the last one that was enrolled in our district without triple I. To remove it now robs them of an opportunity to experience the diversity of our district as they enter their middle school years. Contrary to what some may have said, implementation of triple I for middle schools was necessary. The evidence suggests that even with an overall decline in low SES, one middle school community will have substantially higher percentage of low SES students than the other if the district moves away from triple I. It makes no sense to have SES-balanced elementary schools only to remove it at the middle schools. A designed feeder-school system from elementary to middle will only increase transportation costs since students could be assigned to an elementary school and then fed to a middle school more than two miles away. It likely will lead to an increase in elementary transfer requests as families realize their middle schools would need transportation. Schools have never worked well for those with non-standard hours. This is not new. And schools' start times have been staggered for years. To use this as a reason to modify triple I ignores the generations of Marshall and D. DeBoltan parents could have kids at both schools with two different start times. There were no calls on parent schools because the community stayed the course. In fact, eight of the nine members who worked on the initial triple I program were members or were current or former Marshall-Boltan parents. As reported in moving triple I forward, I do not look at our students as data points, but there are those who are using selective data points to further their own personal purposes, and they are doing a disservice to Black students. If there are indeed instances of isolated Black placements, Black student placements, that is indeed problematic and should be addressed. But the solution is to create more, is not to create more variance in the student assignment model, but to create less. In conclusion, I strongly encourage the district to continue implementing the triple I Integration Initiative,
That community member is, um, not online.
Okay. Um, next, we have Lori McGuire-Gates. They might, yeah.
That community member is also not online.
Yeah. Um, we have Rosanna Jackson.
That community member is also not online.
Um, Suzanne Ryan.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, hello?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. Once again, thank you for your service. And Ryan, I currently reside in Philadelphia. Was a 39-year resident of Maplewood, 1985 to 2024. Three children attended SOMSD in 21. I taught SOMSD for 25 years.
Suzanne, I'm, I'm so sorry. We cannot hear, we cannot hear you. I'm so sorry. I don't know, maybe you have a bad connection or...
Can you hear me now?
You're just very choppy. Um, perhaps you, you could send us an email? You can try one more time. Hello? Did we lose her?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. All right, let's try, let's try one more time.
Okay. Hi, um, my name's Suzanne Ryan, Philadelphia, um, current, um, currently there, but I was a 39-year resident of Maplewood from 1985 to 2024. My three children attended SOMSD. My youngest graduated in 2010. I taught in SOMSD for 25 years, from 1994 until 2020, when I retired. I ser, I served as a Somaya Vice President and Secretary. I also was a member of one of our negotiating teams. Um, I am calling tonight because I am a person with some history that gives us some institutional memory, um, memory that perhaps has dimmed as many have retired. Uh, there's a quote that says, "History does not respect itself, does, does not repeat itself, it rhymes." Sadly, I believe that SOMSD's situation with regard to health insurance carriers is a rhyming situation. In the 1990s, there was a surge in healthcare costs, much like today. SOMSD, number of the state insurance plan, and found itself with a problem. The state's plan costs, um, were projected to increase. At that point, the board decided to explore other private carriers. We left the state plan, we went with a, a private company because the prices looked good. After we had been with them a year, the prices surged there, and the district went back to the state plan and asked if they would take us back. They said that they would, but that if we changed our minds again, that we would be at a loss to come back. So, the board now is under the same situation. The state plan pretty much is the bellwether for other plans. So while the state plan is surging this year, next year you'll see the private insurance companies commensurate with what you see this year. So there's a warning that I give you in terms of a historical perspective. You have this year, and, um, private insurance may not be cheaper in the long run. Please expect an increase in the private insurance, even if it's self-insured, you'll find yourself in the same boat perhaps. And at this point, is it really same coverage? Because we found that when we switched over to that other insurance, it was not the same. People complained. Um, keep in mind that people that have left the state system are trying to come back. Take a look at Belleville. They left the state plan a few years back, and they are considering coming back. So please don't repeat history or even rhyme. Please stay with the state plan for my beloved colleagues of the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. The last public speaks listed here is Daniel Thorne.
Hi, can I...
Hello?
Hi, can you, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so, my name is Danielle Thorne, I am a South Orange resident. I have two kids in the district at the earliest stages of their education, and I am also an SOMSD alumna, a proud one. Um, I'm here to talk about Triple I. I have a much lengthier thing I will send you, um, and I hope you will give me the courtesy of reading it in full. But there has been much said about the desire for hardship waivers, and I've yet to see anyone share the perspective of a family who was bussed back when there was no such thing as a hardship waiver in Somia. Many folks have used the example of the childcare challenges encountered by single moms whose kids don't go to their neighborhood school to demonstrate why an increase to the variance or adjustments to the hardship waiver process are necessary. But here's the thing, I was raised by a single mom in this district, and I was in the Marshall Bolden pairing, meaning I did take a bus. And many of my peers did not live in my neighborhood. Back then, it would not have even occurred to my mom to demand that the school grant a waiver and keep me in my neighborhood school to make her childcare coordination easier. That just wasn't even a thing. And because it wasn't a thing, my mom thought of other ways to solve the problem, caused by her getting off work after school let out, an experience many parents have. We did not have money for before or after care either. So what did we do when we couldn't rely on neighbors walking me home from the bus stop? My mom planned upstream for that. I walked home with or was picked up at school by classmates' parents and hung out at their house until my mom got off work. My mom picked me up from their house. There are ways to make this work without a hardship waiver being the default or first solution. I'm not arguing that there are no legitimate hardships, but I see much rhetoric that acts like the only solution here is a change in district policy, when some of the solution is just a change in mindset between relying on your, your direct neighbors for community to relying on the other parents in your child's school for community. Similarly, I have also heard of the school's start times be used as a reason parents may want a hardship waiver. But if we pause to think about it, that really has nothing to do with Triple I. If we had neighborhood schools and your child's school's start time made getting to work a challenge, your family would have to work that out. For many, that's where before care and car pools came in. I understand the temptation to say, "Oh, man, it would be so much easier if we were just placed in X school instead of Y, because then I could make the morning train." But Triple I isn't responsible for causing that situation. Even if all elementary schools had the same start time, that time would inevitably be inconvenient for some subset of parents. Should those parents be able to ask the BOE to change the start time for all district schools to accommodate their work schedule? If not, why do folks feel it must or should be any different under the III? And why would we risk undermining the implementation of Triple I to accomplish that goal of convenience? I have much more to say, I will put it in writing, and I would welcome ongoing engagement on this important topic.
Thank you. That completes public speaks. So now we go to committee report outs, and we can start on this side. Thank you. So maybe if you have three pages of a, of a committee report out, you reduce that to like one and a half? Deidra, I know it's hard for you.
I don't know, I'm not going to do that.
You are every month, so I'll, I'll give you a pass, but you know, a reminder, these all go, are actually currently on the web, so, thank you.
All right. The Rutgers Implementation Committee met on October 8th. Those attending from the board were President Val Wilson, Second Vice President Eckert, Board Member Saka Gable, and myself. Those attending from the administration were Mr. Bing, Dr. Gilbert, and Dr. Wabell. Among the issues discussed in committee were the following. The Triple I transfer requests and policy 5124. Data provided back, provided to the BOE back, um, as of September 15th is the most up-to-date data at, or was the most up-to-date data on transfers at the time of the committee meeting. Mr. Bing had been reviewing review, uh, reviewing appeals, and those were scheduled to start going out to families on October 11th. The district explained that once school starts, its priority is to get new enrollments placed and in school, so they have not been working on transfer requests in the interim. Hence, that's why the data the board was provided as of September 15th is the most current. October 15th is generally when new enrollment work is completed. This is when the district will look at the current transfer waiting list again and see if they can make any more transfers, starting with tier one transfers. The district anticipates this will take three weeks, therefore families still waiting to hear about transfer requests should hear in the coming week or so if they haven't already. There was also continued discussion of the Triple I evaluation, the middle schools. There was, you know, as discussed in prior Rutgers committee meetings, ALV's analysis indicated that more than 90% of students were placed at their closest or zoned school, which is isolating for those not placed at the closest school. The district recommended not doing the Triple I middle schools, which Mr. Bing announced at the Town Hall earlier in the month. Variance. As discussed in prior Rutgers committee meetings, ALV's analyzed the 5, 7.5, and 10% variance and found no significant change in school balance. Subsequently, the district further discussed modeling 15, 20, and 25% variance with ALV's. In general, variance is used as a guardrail for ensuring school balance. The district, district discussed other variances with ALV's, as other schools' ALV services use higher variance. So for example, Montclair uses between 15 and 25% variance, Champaign, Illinois uses 15, and Cambridge, Mass, Massachusetts uses between 10 and 15% variance. However, the district concluded that anything over 15% variance would be too high because you would have more than 50%, you would have 50% or more of your students from one SES group. For example, the ideal balance of a school is 33% low SES, 33% medium, and 33% high SES. So if one has a 10% variance, that means 33% in one tier could go up or down by 10%. So you would have a maximum range between 23 to 43%. This is not mean necessarily that schools would, would be at this target, but would be in this range, or would be at that 43 or 23, but rather they'd be guardrails that they, the schools could not go beyond. As a result of the analysis and discussion, the district recommended moving to a 10% variance, which Mr. Bing announced at the Town Hall early in the month. Adjusting the variance by 10% does allow for some placement flexibility and does not affect balance significantly according to the ALV's modeling per data sent to the board in August. School capacity is generally the largest factor in school, in students not getting assigned to their closest school. However, if a school does have capacity, upping the variance a little would help place a student at a school closer to their home. There was also exploration of other integration oper, options. There was a robust discussion on the sustainability of the Triple I in its current form, namely the long route times and early pickup times for students and the high transportation costs. Many in the meeting felt that the Triple I is unsustainable in its current form, especially in light of the tough budget situation we are facing. However, all agreed that integration is important for our district. Where there is disagreement in lie, it lies in whether and how to modify the Triple I. Within the discussion, Triple I transportation and its costs were discussed. It was commented that effective and efficient transportation is imperative for any integration model, so logistical challenges, changes are needed because transportation is not working for families in its current form. There was a question as to what are isolated placements? And the response was, it's those, those placements where one child is going to a school that no one else in their neighborhood is going to. The district is examining prior year's transportation data to determine estimates of costs related to pre-K and Triple I K through eight busing. The district also shared preliminary data on a three-school zone model that demonstrated that, which demonstrated that grouping, South Mountain, Marshall, and Clinton as one group, and Bolden, Tuscan, and Seth Boyden as another group. Um, so essentially, if you live in an area of one of those three schools, you, you'd be kind of zoned to that area and be sent to one of those three schools, as opposed to the current model where students are potentially, uh, sent to six schools. By grouping the schools in those three, those two groups, that resulted in SES balance. It was discussed that just this change would also likely reduce transportation times and costs, because those three school groupings are closer to go out together. However, the school capacities do not match the current zoning. So for example, South Mountain, Marshall, and Clinton would have too few seats for their neighborhood zones, and the other group too many. As a result, if the district wanted to take this approach, some rezoning would be needed. Other considerations to help integrate schools to be explored by the district include a dual language program at South Boyden and continue, continued expansion of multilingual learners' classrooms. However, these were not discussed in detail as the committee was, meeting was running late. The district has or will make the following modifications to the Triple I. The district will move to a 10% variance. The district is, or already has implemented a transfer policy, and the district is using proximity placement. It was also suggested that to help address families' needs and to improve routes in the near term, the district could look at isolated placements and proactively reach out to families and potentially do swaps of students between schools if parents are agreeable and it maintains the balance. For the longer term, the district will undertake a larger review of various approaches to integration and what those approaches would look like. Gentrification needs to be examined as part of this review. The review could be part of the strategic planning process the district will be undertaking in this next year, and the district's budget needs to be considered. A rough guess of pre-K and Triple I transportation is at least $4 million, but the district is working on more educated estimates of transportation costs of Triple I in K through five, and they will be sending that to the Board of Education once it's completed over the next few weeks. The district stated that the way to roughly think about it is that for every $10 million and, every $1 million in savings equates to 10 teacher positions. By the next Rutgers meeting, the district states that it will have more information on if they want to pursue the three-school model and/or undertake other approaches to integration. Giving, given the expected budget challenges in the year, in this year and future years, everything is on the table for explanation. This is similar to what other districts are going through, including our neighbors in Montclair. The district also provided a brief update on their future plans for the Triple I survey. The district would like to revise the Triple I survey to collect feedback, um, not necessarily on climate and culture experience, since that's covered in other surveys, which the district administers and thinks are better, but really to focus on questions that are on placement, transportation, and hardships. And they also suggest conducting the survey one time a year, which would require a change in board policy. Lastly, the floor was open to any Rutgers recommendations that committee members wanted to discuss after the September 20, uh, board presentation on the Rutgers recommendations. And there was a question about the status of Rick, well, you guys can read that, I'll, I'll shorten it up. Um, that is in the written notes. The next committee meeting, we are going to be meeting again. Um, normally we meet every two months, but we are going to be meeting on November 10th, and there is more detail on our committee discussion in the written notes, so please go to the district website, full full recap of the meeting in the board committees section. And, um, I just, before I open it up to questions or comments, I kind of, I wanted to make a comment of my own, if that's okay? Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Bing for his leadership in taking a close look at the Triple I program. I really appreciate the time and the thought that's gone into evaluating what's working and what's not. As Nubia mentioned, as board members, we hear from families across the district every week, and I want to share some of what I've heard so that people understand the impact of the current design of the Triple I. I've heard about kindergartners waking up really early to catch a 7:00 AM bus ride, riding for 45 minutes plus across two towns. Some kids get to school too early and have to wait for school to start, others arrive too late. Parents tell us they're paying for extra childcare or getting to work late because of unreliable transportation. We're also facing serious financial strain. The district is spending roughly $4 to $5 million a year on pre-K through eight transportation, and Triple I is a part of that. The district ended up having to add buses this year to add to address transfer change, transportation challenges. And so any savings the district thought we were going to have disappeared. At the same time, we're trying to plan for the future. Things like buying our own buses or hiring more paras, all of those are investments that take real money. I want to be clear that I, and I believe all members of the board and the district are fully committed to integrated schools, but I believe that we need to do it in a way that is sustainable for our families and our budget. Changes won't happen overnight, but we have to start now. I truly believe that we can design a smarter plan that maintains integration, reduces costs, and keeps more resources in the classroom. I'll just end by saying that the amount of time adjusting and working within our currently flawed integration system takes away from the real work of educating our children, addressing our achievement clap, gap, and improving our schools' climate and culture. We saw from NJSLA results that we've made progress, but we, a lot more work needs to be done. And I would like to get to a place where that's I'll just end by saying that the amount of time adjusting and working within our currently flawed integration system takes away from the real work of educating our children, addressing our achievement gap, and improving our schools' climate and culture. We saw from NJSLA results that we've made progress, but we, a lot more work needs to be done. And I would like to get to a place where that's the focus of our administration 100% of the time, as opposed to the significant amount of time they spend simply trying to work within the current triple I.
Thank you. Thank you, Deirdre, for the recap, and I want to also take a moment to support Mr. Bing's efforts and commitment to the integration initiative. I also want to take this moment to extend, extend some of the sentiments shared by Deirdre and also by Nubia. The triple I is imperative to our district's mission to drive student outcomes academically and across social, emotional factors. But alongside the positive impacts for our community, we've also now experienced rather acutely, challenges of the model, including ongoing transportation woes, chronic lateness, disproportionate hardships, soft and hard costs of isolated placements, a loss of learning time, which all ultimately, ultimately impeding progress to close the achievement gap for students, including our most vulnerable. It's why policies are not doctrinal and should always be modified as more data, more experiences, changes, professional recommendations, and learnings are presented without losing sight of the purpose. The challenges I mentioned before are apparent. We've seen the data. We've heard from parents. We've heard from students. It's why I support looking at placement criteria, hardship criteria, zoning, owning our buses, amongst other proposals, all with the shared goal of sustainability and longevity for the three, for the triple I. For clarity, these are proposals I would support even in a healthy budget environment. Said another way, if we continue the current iteration of the three, do nothing and bolt on the current budget circumstances, we not only make the triple I unsustainable, we put the entire district at risk. And in short, everyone loses. Which is why, in this budget climate, I will not support any teaching staffing cuts or program cuts. It's the last resort. We must exhaust efficiencies and reallocations elsewhere first. I'm reminded of the math that Mr. Bing stated in his Community Speaks, and we've heard here before. Every $1 million equals 10 staff. And I'm also reminded of the oath that I took as a BOE member to ensure the education and integrity of our district. Simply put, any relief and improvements on the threes, on the triple I's implementation helps us to focus, preserve, and progress the actual teaching and learning outcomes, which is the ultimate intention.
Thank you, Board Member Brown. As you said, I was in attendance at the October Rutgers Committee meeting, and respectfully, I disagree with the decision to raise the variance and overhaul the intentional integration initiative structure at this time. With the minor adjustments already made, the current implementation has improved. While ongoing evaluation and refinement are certainly appropriate as needed, and the Rutgers recommendations acknowledge this, there has been no clear evidence presented to justify such a significant alteration. Given that and the progress we've seen, I don't believe that now is the time to make changes that will make our schools less integrated and make future data more difficult to discern. Changing to a zone model would further pull our district leaders away from the needed work in the classrooms. Instead, let's prioritize putting resources into the true integration that happens in the classrooms, hallways, and on the playgrounds. As we know from recurring incidents of bias, this is where resources are sorely needed. Integration should not be reduced to a disposable budget line item. Just as we wouldn't remove sinks in bathrooms to save on plumbing costs, we shouldn't dismantle fundamental initiatives because they have a cost. The real cost is what our children would pay without them. Additionally, this process requires transparency and broader engagement. I propose that the Rutgers Committee meet as Committee of the Whole so that the full board can engage and the public can be privy to this discussion behind, the discussion behind any changes to the triple I. And since we're headed into our strategic planning process, it's also important that any major shifts happen within that broader framework. So my view is, let's stay the course and allow the current model time to demonstrate its full impact before taking steps that could compromise the progress we've already
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I agree that this work requires consistency. And I think it also requires transparency. I think we've made meaningful progress. I think we've moved to a proximity model. We've liberalized Policy 5124, and I agree, ongoing evaluation is going to be essential. For example, reviewing hardship data, which so far this year has not yet been presented to us in a way that would allow any real understanding of socioeconomic breakdown among what the transfers look like. Ensuring we do have a definition that was shared tonight on isolated placements and a completed transportation analysis. To date, we have not had any additional FFT meetings regarding transportation, though they have been requested, so we would also need to look at that in a more in-depth level and also considering what the revised triple I survey results show us. And I think, given these evolving factors, as we approach having fully integrated elementary schools next year, I believe that continuing to monitor the variables we've changed rather than making enormous structural changes is the right next step. As said, I do want to echo the concern around process and communication. Not all board members have had access to the same information from Rutgers. So in advance of the community conversation, without committee notes, the full board locked visibility into these discussions and data that informed what was apparently a finalized decision. So some of these ideas certainly had been socialized, had been in notes, but for some of us, the first time we heard that they were finalized was secondhand, that we would have a doubled variance, that middle school was being removed or presented as finalized, not under consideration, and that was found out from some board members after the fact. So now, having reviewed the notes I've shared with colleagues, my concern deepens, not only because of the content, but because the full board didn't have the opportunity to provide input, ask questions, despite assurances and norms that that kind of engagement occurs. Additionally, we weren't aware that the Village Green would be speaking with Mr. ALV's, an opportunity the full board hasn't had since the summer. And so these lapses in communication and information sharing make it difficult to build trust and confidence in the way that this process is playing out. So I strongly support Board Member Saka Gable's proposal that the Rutgers Committee convene as a Committee of the Whole so that all board members and the public can engage in these discussions together. I think doing so would ensure that these decisions reflect the full board's perspective and are made transparently in full view of the community that we serve. And lastly, as we said, our priorities should, I think we all agree, remain on meaningful integration, the kind that happens every day. As Board Member Saka Gable, we have seen incidences of bias, and indeed, our variance metric is only one way that we look at integration. And to do that well, we need our team to be focused on that. We need accurate data, open communication, and shared understanding. I think staying the course, continuing to monitor the adjustments that we've most recently made, and resolving the major logistical issues around transportation requires the focus of this board. While improving transparency and collaboration and grounding our future decisions, and the upcoming NJSBI strategic planning process gives us the best chance to sustain and deepen the progress that we've already begun to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
I'll just jump in really quick. First, I want to say that I appreciate the work that's been going on in the Rutgers Committee, both around the important Rutgers Equity work and the triple I piece that's been sort of tacked on to it, so Board Members Brown, Saka Gable, and the rest of the committee. I appreciate as well the memo that Superintendent Bing has sent out, and the conversation that's been started, and specifically reiterating that the discussion about how integration is happening in our community is something that requires significant community involvement. Because this is something that is very clearly impacting a massive portion of the community, some folks more than others, some in very different ways than others. And I think the work that has happened in that committee before is important. I do think it is time for us to really move intentionally to having more public conversations with the board as a whole to make sure, first of all, that all members have that opportunity to be speaking with each other, which, of course, we can only do in front of the public, which is good because then it's in front of the public, and also that we're moving to having more community conversations to discuss things like the proposals that the ALV's group have put out and that so far, just board members have seen so far. I also think it's really important that we acknowledge there are a lot of proposals on the table for things that we could do to change pieces of the triple I, and I don't think we need to consider it to be a sacred cow that can never be modified at all, but we do need to be really careful and really slow, right? We are just seeing the whole elementary school as of next year become fully integrated under the triple I. And so we're looking at the possibility of changing the variable, the variance, the possibility of changing to two zones, and essentially having, I guess, sort of two triple Is in our town, looking at the possibility of changing the middle school. There's a lot of pieces here, and I think we need to make sure that we are doing the right ones and not doing all of them, or doing them scattered, shot, or in a rushed way. This plan took a long time to be developed, and then after, a lot of different plans were considered, and I want to make sure that we're not rushing into something and cutting off our nose to spite our face. We do have to fix the transportation issues. You know, a kindergartner shouldn't necessarily be having to leave the house at 7 o'clock in the morning to get to school, but we do also need to figure out how the entire community can help figure out our work-life balance, because it can't all just be on the district either. So I appreciate the work. I do think we need to move more of it in public now at this point, now that things are really moving quickly, and make sure that we have a plan that will keep our eye on that, that guide star of continuing our integration process and not losing sight of it, while also, of course, making sure this is working for our budget, for our community in general.
We can just go down the line, and then we need to move on to personnel. Thank you.
I want to say that I agree with my board colleagues on the need to actually have this conversation more in public and to share more data with the public. You know, the Board of Education has received a lot of information on like the current workings of the triple I and, you know, an analysis of what might happen under various changes that, and this information hasn't been shared with the public. You know, for instance, we could see like what the beta testing would be, like if we adjusted the variance from a 5% to 7.5% to 10%. We could see what the demographics were of each school's proximity zone. I don't mean like the kids who are assigned to that school, but like the kids for whom that school is the closest school. Like, we have that data, but the board has seen it, and it'd be something good for the public to see because they could actually make their own judgments from that. We also, we, the board, have seen like the impact of the new proximity precedent system, and it would be good for the public to see that, too. Like, we've seen like maps of actually where kids come from, who are assigned to each school, and like seeing those maps, which were released for the first year of the triple I, 21, 22, I think would also like inform the public very much. I want to reiterate something that Will Meyer said a few seconds ago, that we wouldn't be setting up six elementary school zones, like what we had before the Marshall-Jefferson pairing. Before the triple I, we really had like, you know, like six schools in five zones. But we wouldn't be setting up something like that. We'd be setting up something I like to call two sets of three, two S, you could call it like two S three. You know, most likely, the most logical way to do it, we'd have the three northern schools, which would be South Mountain, Marshall, and Clinton, and then the three southern schools. If you do that, actually, like we have the data to say that actually, those zones are demographically extremely similar. Like, in terms of race, they would be within plus or minus 5%. And in terms of the three demographic tiers, they also like would be within plus or minus 5% just naturally. It would make a much better situation for busing. Like, I've looked at the maps, and actually, the longest bus route I think a child could have under that system would be 2.4 miles, which would be from like Van Ness Street to the Bolden School. And under our current system, in theory, a child could have a four-mile bus ride. That wouldn't, so 2.4 miles is not less than four miles. Also, there are a lot fewer transportation dyads. Like, once two sets of three were fully phased in, and only thinking of like gen ed students, there would be at most 12 transportation dyads, whereas under the status quo, like year three of the triple I, there are like almost, there are over 25 transportation dyads. With the proximity precedent system, there are fewer transportation dyads, but it's still like in the mid-teens, it's more than 12. So transportation would work a lot better, shorter distances, fewer dyads, like greater efficiency. Something I don't think has come up yet is that having two sets of three would also make a really natural, fair, efficient way to assign kids to the middle schools. When the triple I was planned a few years ago, there was no planning at all about how elementary triple I cohorts will be assigned to the middle schools. Like, since 2022, 23, we've just used the triple I to assign sixth graders, which works because, you know, there isn't a lot of busing that that requires, and like 85 to 93% of kids are assigned to their closer school. And, you know, we still could do that for the rising fourth graders, who are the first triple I cohort, but it'll mean like a lot of kids are like separated from their friends, and they wouldn't like that. And, you know, for some kids, that would be pretty hard. Like, it's been suggested we could set up the elementary schools as feeder schools. And, you know, that would make a lot of predictability, like a child would go to middle school and like all their elementary school friends would be there with them. That sounds really good. But actually, as a public speaker pointed out, that would require a lot more transportation because there are a lot of South Orange kids who are assigned to Maplewood Elementary Schools and vice versa, and a lot more of those kids in sixth, as sixth graders, would be over two miles, we'd be busing a whole lot more kids, which we can't afford right now. But if we had two sets of three with the northern schools and the southern schools, it's just natural that the northern schools would go to Psalms and the southern schools would go to MMS. You know, the only thing we'd have to decide is actually like, you know, would we do like a formal zone so that like maybe some kids who are closer to MMS are assigned to Psalms because like we want the two schools to be equal in size? Would we do that? Maybe. But it's an opportunity because depending on how you draw the line, like you could actually make the two middle schools even more demographically identical. So anyway, like, I don't know how soon it could, we're not going to like, we can't like rush things, we do have to share the data with the public, and we have to give the public a chance to weigh in. But I do think that like two sets of three, which was considered back in 2018, 2019, like is a viable solution that would provide integration for the elementary schools and the middle schools, and could give us a chance to have fair busing so that no child like feels like, no child is like treated unfairly, no child's waking up to catch a bus for 7:00 AM, you know? We have to, the system's not working for everyone right now, and I don't think we can accept that.
Yeah, that was fine. So I've shared some of this in committee meetings, but I do agree, I think we do have to start having more public conversations, and so I do, I want to express my appreciation for Superintendent Bing, his commitment to integrated schools, and the work that's gone into getting us here. We all want integrative, inclusive schools that reflect the diversity and strength of our community. It's not up for debate. It's just, it's simply not. The question is how we get there, and I think it's totally fair to pause and ask whether the current path still makes sense given where we are now. The initial iteration of IAI rolled out during the 21, 22 school year. It was poorly planned and executed, and, you know, Will, to your point, I think that actual plan wasn't what was initially designed. So I think the fact that there are some community members and, quite frankly, some board colleagues that, you know, think it is time. It's been, well, we have four years of data, both qualitative and quantitative data, and I think we've all formed our opinions, and that's totally okay. But it was poorly planned and executed, and it's created real hardships, stress, and financial harm to many families in this district, including many students of color and lower SES students. My colleagues have already shared some of the stories that we've heard as board members, so I'm not going to bother repeating them, but I will go back to one of the first things that I have truly believed and said since I've joined the board and had initiated the first iteration of the 5124 transfer policy around hardships. Who are we to determine what a hardship is? We have no idea what anybody's personal situations are. Who are we to say to parents that are requesting hardships simply for convenience? We absolutely don't know. And I think there are some real challenges that students and families face, and maybe they don't make it as public as we want it to be, and there's a reason for that. But I think we should acknowledge that other districts, including ones that our consultant has worked with, have found different ways to reach the same goal. And what matters is finding what works best for our community, something that supports students, has community buy-in, and is financially and operationally sustainable long-term. And I do believe that it is perfect timing because we are about to kick off the five-year strategic plan, that actually, it is all aligned with that. My understanding is that those conversations around what potential modifications, whether it's the two, two-zone, three-school, could look like. Given our budget realities, we need to be practical about how we move forward. I truly believe we can stay true to the goals of integration, still make adjustments that fit today's reality. With in-district transportation costs around $4 to $5 million a year, I think it's worth asking whether some of that could be better spent supporting teachers, classrooms, and programs that directly impact students, and thank you.
I can't believe we still have to get through some more readouts, but this is an issue dear to my heart, and I come from, I come from a different angle a little bit here, so. I want to respond to the recent criticisms of increasing the variance of placement for triple I, also in general to the proponents of triple triple I, also in general to the proponents of triple I who feel a threat to it as somehow diminishing our commitment to equity. More than 20 years ago, I ran for the Board of Ed as a high school senior because when I dug into the numbers of our Level Twos, the lowest levels, which thank God don't exist anymore, were almost completely black, over 95%. I ran again as a college freshman with now-soon-to-be Assemblyman Chigozion Yama. We ran specifically, we ran specifically to close the achievement gap, and what that meant to us was directing resources towards the students who needed it most to be uplifted. We needed to give those students more opportunity to thrive. I say this to beg the question, does our integration initiative address the needs of closing the achievement gap? Integration is a noble endeavor, but does busing a student across district to another, to another part of the district provide them with more opportunity? The cosmetics of triple I look fantastic, but how does a student who is struggling to read get more resources from this arrangement? When I envisioned fighting the achievement gap, it was first de-leveling, which we have done to a certain extent, but it was also hiring more black teachers, changing the curriculum in a significant way that spoke and transformed black students' experience from stagnation to success, strategies that have proven to work. And when I talk about success, this is not just about a good GPA or acceptance to college, but self-actualization and pride in their history and present struggle to continue to challenge us in this comfy community of ours where so much inequity still exists. That's all.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, everyone. Appreciate all the feedback, and we will continue the conversation after our meeting, right? We talk a lot behind the scenes. Okay, next is personnel.
Personnel committee met on Monday, October 25th at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Board Members Sackett Gabel and Brown, filling in for Board Member Kapadia, and myself, along with Mr. Bing, Dr. Gilbert, and Mr. Adidoyan. More than usual this month, a large chunk of the meeting was discussion around confidential personnel matters, but a few things that I can highlight. The district provided a general update on vacancies with discussion around some of the personnel recommendations on the resolution this evening. As of, I believe it was October 20th, we had six total vacancies, one of which is a leave of absence. We also discussed the new health insurance per, um, potential change. We all, Mr. Moody went through all of that, so I don't need to, to go through that. And we discussed the '25-'26 district goal related to personnel and the Q1 KPIs. Mr. Adidoyan will be providing the committee a more robust update in the November meeting on metrics, metrics established for baseline measurement. So things that the district is going to start looking at, voluntary turnover rate, initial staff satisfaction index, hiring and attrition data, and, you know, looking, disaggregating it by staff type, teacher, et cetera. I personally, and I don't know if, I think I've talked about this before, but it's been about three or four years since the district has had a personnel-related goal, and I think that I'm very excited to see it in action and at least in the next two months to support the HR department as much as I can in this capacity. The next committee meeting will be Monday, November 17th at 6:30 PM. Any questions, comments?
The Policy and Governance Committee met on October 1st. There are a total of eight second-read policies this evening, six first-read policies, and two first-read regulations, in addition to one policy that is being abolished. I'll now read the full text of each one of them into the record. I guess, no, I won't. Are we gonna cancel that? I'm sorry. Edit. I, I'm gonna let you go to the agenda to see the policies that are going through. Most of these are based upon the Strauss Esame Policy Alerts 234 and 235, which we're slowly working our way through to update our policies in line with the state statutes. We have made sure in doing this to make sure that we are keeping the local language that we've previously adopted to make sure that these policies are matching our specific values. For instance, in Policy 8500 and Food Services, to include our local language, that the school or a school district shall not deny a child a meal, period, which I think is very relevant given the, um, the current SNAP crisis that we're looking at coming down the pike. We also have, we discussed a couple of the items at the policy meeting, including Policy 5330 on administration of medication, looking at any ways that we can ease the, uh, the workflow for parents who have to reauthorize self-administration of medication for students at the beginning of the school year. Also looking at the standard operating procedures the district is creating, we've got a large number of them in the hopper. They are coming through and will be posted on the district's website, so you can see the district's SOPs for all manner of different procedures throughout the district. And finally, we discussed the Committee for Community and Revenue Partnerships, which we are creating by resolution this evening in implementation of our Board Goal Number One, identifying new revenue streams by committee. Any questions? All right.
FFT met on October 17th. A big item on our agenda was improving the budget calendar. We added milestones to reflect greater transparency and accountability from both the administration, for both the administration and the board. Some examples are when exactly we should expect to receive and present the district audit, and when the board receives specific items related to the budget as the year progresses. The goal is clear, is clearly defined, deliverables and timelines. The board can reasonably expect to support effective oversight. We also discussed transportation cost drivers, the distance shift from 2.0 to 1.25, increased costs from $9 million to $10.4, a 1.4 million increase as we face fiscal hurdles and need a rapid cost and, and need for rapid cost reductions. Um, you know, this is, the 1.5 standard may have to be revisited. We'd also discuss the equity in enrollment in demographics in our pre-K. White and Asian students are overrepresented in our pre-K. African-Americans underrepresented by as much as 10%. The district is aiming to do some recruitment there to close that gap. Lastly, the district aims to enact a budget freeze on November 1st, which Mr. Moody already said to immediately control expenditures. Approximately $8 million in savings are needed to balance the budget next year. FFT will be developing a plan. We're gonna make a plan by our next meeting to, to try to face this, this budget deficit. The next FFT is November, the next, the next FFT meeting is November 12th. Any questions?
Just a quick comment, and Mr. Bing, you know probably where I'm gonna go with this. Specific to financial resolution for 868C, it's travel expenses, in your November FFT meeting, budget freeze will be in effect by then, but I think understanding for the board and, and everyone else to understanding the guardrails around that, like what is, what are gonna be the real, true necessary expenditures in terms of travel, conferences, all of that stuff? Thank you.
I just want to quickly add, I'm happy that we were able to work together to add some additional content to the budget calendar. It's part of our board goal, and I think it definitely is more comprehensive than it's been in the past, so thank you. One thing that is not listed in there, because I know we don't get too much in the weeds sometimes, but it's our cost center view. '25-'26, and of course, we need to do it for '26-'27, and so it's not listed in there, but it was requested, and I'm just holding FFT accountable as well as Central Office to make sure that when you are looking at Q1 budget versus actual and doing the budget for next year, that we are going to continue to, to have our cost center view. It's something that we've done in this district annually, and we need to continue to do so, and I think it's really important for FFT to have that information before the end of the year. Thank you. Yes, Deirdre?
Um, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on that point and make a separate point. The cost center view for the school year '24-'25 is online, and, and I would hope that we can get, it's called final cost center, for the budget that was passed '25-'26. If we can get that approved budget in the cost center view sooner rather later, I think that's gonna help us all, especially because we have these tough decisions to make, and it's going to help the public. I mean, I know that we, you've talked about, the district's talked about budget literacy, and part of improving the community's understanding of our budget is by putting transparent information out there, and I, that cost center view provides really important detail to understand where our costs are and also allows year-to-year comparisons, and so I just, I really hope that we can get that on the website to the public soon.
No deliverables.
The other thing I wanted to, to just mention was that I noticed in the FFT minutes, there was discussion about eliminating, um, busing, courtesy busing, which is busing for students who live within two miles of a school to help address our budget concerns. And I just want to state for the record that I do believe that transportation is an integral part of any successful integration plan. And I do believe that it is the district's responsibility to provide transportation to students if they live more than 1.25 miles away from a school that they are assigned to that is not their neighborhood school. And this is especially, I think, important for our low SES students or families. This year, 40% of our low SES kindergartners were not assigned to their first or second closest school, and not, so therefore not providing reasonable transportation for these families does create an undue hardship and undermines the goal of integration. So I, I do hope as we continue our discussion of the integration initiative and where we want to move it forward, that transportation is an integral part of that.
And I just want to make a brief point. I, I agree with that, and I, I want to note that there was a Policy 8600 that was put forward and was passed on first read that would have codified in the record that courtesy busing was for pre-K through five at 1.25 miles, and by a majority of opinions on the board, that was taken off before it went to second read. So we don't have that in the policy because of that, but that would have been acknowledged.
I think, I, I just want to clarify, though, because I think there's still a lot of discussion around pre-K busing, so it wasn't because there was a change in mind on that at all. I mean, in all honesty, I believe that the, as soon as we reinstated transportation at 1.25 miles, that should have been codified in policy in 2023. A few of us asked for that, and it, it, it just didn't push through. So it, it wasn't because anybody changed their mind, it was because there's very robust discussions around what's gonna happen around pre-K busing.
Ditto. Okay. Yeah, it's true. We just gotta, we gotta move on. Jeff, Jeff, we, no, no, Jeff. Thanks.
I was gonna do the next committee.
Yeah, next committee.
It'll be quick, because we covered, we already covered a lot of it with Mr. Moody's updates and Mr. Bing's updates around Ritzer, the budget update that went out earlier this week. So you guys are exceeding expectations in terms of follow-up from the last MP meeting, but more importantly, on Monday, we are meeting in an emergency MP meeting to discuss the food emergency amongst our most vulnerable students and families. So the next meeting will be November 3rd as opposed to November 17th, which is on the, which was on the original schedule.
Oh, I know, no, I have no chance to make it the shortest one. You did a great job. Pressure's on. So the Special Services Committee met on October 14th. All board members and Superintendent Bing and Ms. Jess Maria were in attendance. We were joined for the first portion of the meeting by President of CPAC, Nicole Josie, who were excited to hear that our Paris in-self-contained ABA classrooms were being restored both in pay and title, retroactive to July 2025. We discussed concerns around special education vacancies and what communication has looked like to families, and we also discussed some of the latency between arrival times and when students are taken off of buses, and Ms. Jess Maria indicated that she would follow with specific schools as power professionals are being compensated to arrive prior to start time, so to avoid that issue. Let's skip this. So we had an important budget presentation from our business administrator, Mr. Moody, which included an overview of special services spending. In particular, we talked about reimbursement, we talked about staffing. Some key points of discussion included higher-than-anticipated state reimbursement, which is a plus, and then some of our ongoing efforts to build in-district programs to reduce future costs, knowing that those are an investment upfront with hopefully long-term savings, and continued pressure related to third-party contract costs that we have. The district plans to analyze potential savings from continuing to expand in-house programming as well as bringing some staff potentially in-house versus contracted over time, and is also evaluating potential for tuition in model students. In addition to this budget presentation, we also reviewed an overview that was provided to us for, from our Special Education Council, and the committee will be providing feedback and recommendations for how to move forward with receiving more targeted information or audit of those costs related to lawsuits and out-of-district placements so that we can better identify where bottlenecks are and where we have areas for improvement to reduce that spending. We reviewed personnel, but since Board Member Eckert already reviewed that in the interest of time, I will defer to those notes. And to close with a win, the I-Step program at Psalms is up and running and offering a full caseload of support to students, which is great. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 13th, and a full recap of this is available on the district website, and I am open for any questions, should anyone have any. 11:34. Thank you.
All right. The CNI Committee met on October 13th with two special guests, Dr. Anton, the Director of Guidance, and Board Member Meyer, who filled in for Board Member Callahan, and all other members were present, were present. Thanks to Dr. Anton for joining and sharing counseling updates. Afterwards, we discussed progress toward district goals related to CNI. All of those notes are available online, of course, but I would just like to highlight that chronic absenteeism at CHS has declined by 6%, but the rates remain about, at about 12%, and the goal is to be 10% or less, so this is a great start, and we heard about the efforts that have contributed to this decline as well as how the team is moving forward. We discussed the CNI-related policies that are up for review, and, and then lastly, we discussed the delayed math materials. There was a delay in the arrival of elementary math workbooks this year due to state funding delays that affected the publisher's processing timeline. These workbooks are consumable and reordered annually, and they were the only missing component of the math curriculum. This was definitely not ideal, but thank you to teachers for making the necessary adjustments for students. And our next meeting is on Monday.
Okay, great. Great job, everyone. So next, we finally get to the action portion of the meeting. Are there any stevers? Okay, then, Will, you want to just give a quick 30-second overview?
There are, there are a lot of things, as always, in our consent agenda.
I, I know, I, our first day, the, we are adopting 4876, adopting our '26-'27 calendar. The first day of school in that calendar is September 1st, 2026. Resolution 4874, we have a new Committee for Community and Revenue Partnerships being created. In our financials, Resolution 4868, in G, we have our ultimate frisbee, granting them free access to Underhill Field. They are not an official high school team, but we are, we're awfully fond of them. Resolution H is adopting the '26-'27 budget calendar, which is a terrific advancement, and I think it'll help us in our budget development process quite a bit. Resolution O is accepting a $2,000 grant from American Water. We're gonna use it for putting new water fountain bottle filling stations in, and $13,000. And Resolution P, a donation from the Music and Arts Education Project. Thank you very much. Resolution Q, the withdrawal from the state's school employees' health benefits program, as we've discussed extensively. And thirteen thousand dollars in, resolution P, a donation from the Music and Arts Education Project. Thank you very much. Resolution Q, the withdrawal from the state's School Employees Health Benefits Program, as we've discussed extensively. And forty-eight-sixty-eight-R is adopting Meritane for health insurance.
Great, thank you. That was perfect. Okay, so can you please, Mr. Moody, can you please read the resolutions into record?
Absolutely. So we're gonna essentially take action on resolutions forty-eight-sixty-five through forty-eight-seventy-six and there are no severs, so I think we can proceed to for action. We ready for a roll call?
We need to open-
Or are there any other, more discussion?
We go into discussion, but then I don't want to forget, we'll do these after.
Okay. Yes, hand carries.
Wait, or was it, it wasn't in the consent, I don't think, was it?
No, it's not. It's forty-eight-seventy-five to forty-eight-seventy-six.
Yeah, so we'll just do this after.
Yeah, and then we'll do that next. No severs. So I will do a full roll call. Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Sackett Gable?
Yes.
All right. Eyes have it.
Okay, great. And so next, we have three hand carries. I guess we'll just do each one separately? We can just do it three together. Let's just do, okay. So we've got four, eight, seven, seven, A, B, and C. And remember to push them forward. We vote yes. We cannot have discussion because it was discuss and exec, so please do-
So we'll proceed to a roll call vote then.
Yes, thank you.
Forty-eight-seventy-seven, A, B, and C. Board Member Sackett Gable?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
All right, the eyes have it.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, look, now it's hearing of delegations. I closed my online list. Do either of you have it on? Well, while you're looking to see if we have, I'll double check. There's no one else. Okay, great. Everyone's asleep. So Mr. Moody will check to see if there's any new signups and then if not, we, no? Okay, great. Uh, new business? Anyone have anything new business? No? I almost feel like I should never ask because we never do, but I have to ask. Okay, so now, future meetings and closing out. So the Board of Education will meet again for our retreat, woo-hoo, on November 19th, 2025, for a seed presentation and, and review of our SOMSD Board Manual. Then on November 20th, 2025, the board will meet again in public session for our regular meeting. Action will be taken. Mr. Moody, I would now like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. It's still Thursday, October 30th at eleven forty-one, eight, eleven forty-one PM. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Callahan. All in favor? Great. Motion pass.
I will be teaching them what-